Okay, everybody, hear me?
Yes.
Okay, everybody, it's now 5:00 PM, so I'll bring this special meeting public workshop to order. Clerk, can I have roll call?
Commissioner Cook-Askins.
Present.
Vice Chair Herrmann.
Here.
Chair Kirth. And Commissioner Thomas.
Present.
Melissa, I believe Commissioner Chairman Kirth is having some technical difficulties, but he's able to log in under the iPad, I believe, the iPad 004347. If you're able to unmute him to see if he's able to respond.
Okay, and I'll have Gio head over there. Is he here at City Hall?
He is not. He's remote at this time.
Okay.
Okay, then, moving forward, the invocation this morning will be provided by Commissioner Cook-Askins, followed by the pledge of allegiance by myself.
Let us stand. Let us pray. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day that you have given us. We also thank you for this opportunity to meet this evening for this special commission meeting. We ask that you continue to guide our city leadership and those present this evening as we continue to receive input to further develop our city. And we pray this in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Everybody face the flag. Put your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Justice for all. Okay, may I please hear any special instructions from the audience at this time?
Yes, thank you, Vice Chair Herrmann. Pursuant to Governor's Executive Order N-29-20, this meeting is being conducted by Zoom. The Planning Commission strives to carry out its meetings in an atmosphere of professionalism with full participation by members of the body and the public. Everyone, at this time, please go to your toolbar and there's a little globe. We're going to be using translation services, so you'll have to select either the English channel or the Spanish channel. Gabby and Artemio with CIT Agency is going to be doing our Spanish translation services this evening. Just as an FYI, the interpretation services are only accessible via the Zoom app or if you're on a computer. So if you're on a Chromebook or if you're dialing in, you will not have access to that Spanish channel. You'll automatically be put into the English channels. I'm going to hand it over to Gabby for the Spanish translation piece of it.
And if I could, before Gabby provides that translation, if we could have Patricia, if you could show the screen that shows visuals, if you could go ahead and share your screen to show the visuals for...
God, your volume's like really, really low.
How is that? Is that a little better? Okay. All right. If everyone could go ahead and select either English or Spanish on the globe on the bottom right, that will help. And Gabby, are you on the line now?
Yes, we hear you.
Okay, thank you, Melissa and Gabby. We're going to get started now with the public workshop on the city's general plan update. City Planner Scott Webb, please lead off the discussion.
Thank you and good evening, Vice Chair Herrmann and Commissioners. Welcome, everyone, from the public, and thank you for joining us for this virtual workshop. This is the second workshop dedicated specifically to the land use element update. It is the fourth public workshop conducted thus far for the city's general plan update. In addition to city staff working on this proposal, which includes myself and Senior Planner Alex Hadigie, who's on the conference call tonight, we also were able to bring onboard planning consultants funded by the state's Local Early Planning Action Grant. Presenting tonight from City Place Planning, we have Patricia Bloomberg and Claudia Tedford, who are the lead consultants on the city's land use element update. And from Harrison Associates, we have Dema Galkin, whose firm is overseeing the entire general plan update. We look forward to hearing from the public this evening and receiving feedback from the planning commissioners on the land use proposals that will be discussed tonight. We have a lot of information to go over, so without further ado, I want to hand it off to our consultant team. Patricia, take it away.
Thank you, Scott. Can you all hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Great. Okay, excellent. I don't know if we want to go over this slide again, but it's what Melissa and Gabby just identified. If you want to raise your, if you have a question or a comment, you can raise your hand or use the chat function if you want to make some comments, respond to questions. So this evening, we're going to be talking about the land use element update. We're going to be providing just a brief overview. Some of you may have participated in the land use element workshop before, but we're going to give you an update just for some of those who haven't. And kind of the meat of what we're going to be talking about tonight are some potential changes to the land use designations and the land use map. And we'll be looking for feedback from the community and from the planning commission to provide some direction so that we can move on and complete the land use element. And then we'll do a little bit of a wrap up. As Scott mentioned, we have, this is our team, Dema Galkin is with Harrison Associates. Harrison Associates are doing the housing element update, the safety element update, the environmental justice element, which is a new element, and they're doing the CECL, the California Environmental Quality Act, environmental evaluation of this overall project. I'm Patricia Bloom at City Place Planning, and City Place Planning is, we're doing the land use element update. All of these documents are very, it's very important for them to be well-integrated, and we'll be talking a little bit more about that this evening. So before I move on, whoops, before I move on, would just like to hear from you all. But with just a show of hands, raise your hands, how many of you attended the first land use element workshop? And Claudia, you're going to, I don't see any of this on my screen, so you're going to have to let me know what everybody says.
Yes, well, we have a few hands raised. We have about five. Yes.
Excellent. Good to know. Thank you so much. And do we, did any, let's see, I guess I got ahead of myself. Did anybody attend the first land use element workshop? And then did anybody attend the housing element workshop?
I see about, let's see, two, four, six, seven hands raised. Attended both. Yes.
Thank you so much. So that's great. We'll be building on what you have heard before. And for those of you who are new to this process, we'll be providing a little bit of background information to provide a context for moving forward. So just quickly, I want to do just an overview of what a general plan is. A general plan is required by state law for every jurisdiction. It is considered by the state to be what they call the blueprint for communities' future development, and it's really to support the long-term vision for where the community sees itself going. It's a policy document. It's a bigger-picture, global policy document, includes goals, policies that provide direction on decisions that the elected officials make, and then implementing actions to follow up to implement this overall policy document. The chapters for the general plan, they're called elements, and there are seven required. There's a new one, environmental justice element, that is required for some communities, including Victorville. But the elements are the land use element, housing, safety, and environmental justice, those new elements, and those are the documents that Harris is working on right now. There's also circulation, conservation, noise, and open space. Those are, you have all of these documents right now, the circulation, conservation, noise, and open space are not being adopted or updated at this time. That being said, all the elements, whether they're existing or new or being updated, they all need to work together and be consistent to provide that overall blueprint for the community's future development. So what is a land use element? The focus of the discussion tonight is about the land use element, although we will be talking a little bit about the housing element and how it interrelates with the land use element. The land use element is really a guide for future, the development in the city, the physical development in the city. It indicates where various land uses should be located, and it also indicates how dense and intense those land use elements can be. And I know you've probably all been to different cities. Some of them are very rural and have, you know, maybe that the tallest building is two stories. There are other communities where, you know, you've got 10, 20, 40, 60-story buildings and very densely packed. So that is what the density and intensity are. And each element indicates what the community wants to see in terms of their density and intensity of those land uses. A very important thing is that it provides the basis for zoning. You may not know about the land use element, but you may be aware of the zoning code. You know, what's my property zone? What am I allowed to do on it? What are the development standards that apply to me, whether it's a residential property or a commercial property? And the land use element really sets the stage for zoning. And then another very important piece of the, for the land use element is facilitating the update of the sixth cycle housing element, which we are in the process of updating on a parallel track with this. So why is the city updating the land use element? One of the reasons is to accommodate the growth projections for the future. And we've got a slide that shows you what those growth projections are, but that's a really important thing. Victorville is a community that has been growing over the years, and it's projected to continue growing. There are other communities that are pretty much built out. Maybe they're not growing. In some cases, they may even be losing population. You're not. You're growing. So we want to make sure that we can accommodate the growth in the most beneficial way and to preserve the community's vision for the future of its own, your own city. Again, coordinating with the housing element to meet the state requirements relative to housing. As I mentioned, that's a very important key, and because the housing element is due to be updated in October of this year, the timing is perfect to be doing the housing element and the land use element at the same time. Another reason is the community, we're hearing that we need a wider range of housing options, and that's both for the community, the desire of folks who live here, and then also, again, to meet the housing element requirements. Another thing that we are looking at is to try to provide some flexibility in zoning to address some changing retail employment and other land uses related to recent trends. We touched on this at the first workshop. I won't dwell on it, but I think we're probably all very well aware of the significant changes in people's shopping habits. There's so much more shopping online. I think it's around 25% now, whereas just 20 years ago, it was only about 4%. So that certainly impacts land use. Employment, a lot of people are working from home now. Certainly, a lot of this has been sped up by the coronavirus pandemic. There are other land uses that other impacts related to trends, like maybe even people going to school from home, whether it's your elementary, junior, high, and high school students, or now even college students. There's a lot of things that we can do online that we couldn't do before, and that does have an impact on the land use. And we're probably going to see a lot more of that in the future. A lot of it is unknown right now, but we're recognizing the fact that that future is unknown, and so we're thinking that providing some flexibility would really be very beneficial to the city as you're moving forward. And that's also another way to help promote economic development. Another reason why the city is updating the land use element now is to look for ways to stimulate revitalization of maybe some areas in your, in your community that might be underutilized, or they may be, they may be older, and oftentimes, developed portions of communities sort of get left behind as growth moves out into undeveloped areas. And so we're wanting to do whatever we can to stimulate revitalization of those areas so that they don't get left behind. Implementing sustainable land use practices is important as well, and that relates to how people get around, how land, how land uses impact things like air quality, greenhouse gas emissions, concerns with regard to climate change, state mandated requirements in terms of climate change, things like that. And then ultimately, another important goal is to promote health and wellness. We don't necessarily think a lot about how land use can impact health and individuals' health and wellness, but it really does have a lot of impact on health and wellness. It impacts air quality, quality housing, physical activities, the ability of people to get out and about and exercise, recreate, being able to support things like active transportation. So instead of having to drive everywhere, land use practices can, can make it easier for people to walk or to bicycle or ride a scooter or some other active form of transportation, take a bus, utilize transit, that type of thing. And then also making sure that people have access to healthy foods. Sometimes communities really are not close to grocery stores, and so that's something that we want to think about too as well. I mentioned the growth trends. You can see here, back in 1980, there were just over 14,000 residents in Victorville. It really jumped up in 10 years to 40,000. These dark blues are 10-year increments. By 2000, we were up to 64,000. It jumped again quite a bit, just in the five years between 2000 and 2005. It jumped up to 87,000, and then by 2010, you were up to about almost 16,000. You had another jump, another five-year jump to about 123,000. It leveled off a little bit between 2015 and 2020 to around 126,000. By, in 20 years, this is the 20-year gap between 2020 and this gold line, the projections from the Southern California Association of Governments, which is the regional planning agency for Southern California, is estimating approximately 182,000 residents in the next 20 years, and then by 2045, potentially up to 195,000. So we really want to make sure that we're thinking about and planning for that future growth. It obviously would be a lot different if your, if your, if your growth line, your growth trend had leveled off. But it's not. It's really changing and projecting to change rapidly. So we want to make sure that we're accommodating in the most appropriate ways possible. And I wanted to just pause again. If some people have joined us a little bit late, just wanted to let you know that everyone who's joined late, you do need to select your preferred language because we are doing Spanish translation. And to please use the raise your hand function or the chat feature if you want to participate and respond to any questions that we might have. I'm going to pause for a moment and ask Gabby to come back into, into the, into the main room here and provide that translation for some of the Spanish speakers who may be joining and not knowing how to participate. Gabby? Thank you, Gabby. I'm going to stop now and turn it over to Dema Galkin, who is going to provide some information for you about the land use element.
Thank you, Patricia. Like Patricia said, my name is Dema Galkin. I'm with Harrison Associates. And so like Patricia was talking about on the previous couple of slides ago, about the growth in population, one way that we plan for that growth is through the housing element. And this is a state, state law requirement for all jurisdictions in California. So a lot of the details and nuance that we have to follow comes from that state law. And at a high level, the purpose of the housing element is to plan for the housing needs of the jurisdiction for residents of all income levels, and we'll see in a, on the next slide exactly what that looks like. But one of the, the purposes of the housing element, the way it shows that we're planning for, for the housing need is by showing that there's sufficient capacity for the fair share of the regional housing need. And the way that's determined is that the state allocates to regions what they need to accommodate, and then the regions allocate to the local jurisdictions what they need to provide for. And so the housing element is updated every eight years. This practice, this exercise is done on an eight-year basis. And so that's also the time period for which we're planning to make sure that there's sufficient housing capacity. The, and the current cycle goes from October 15, 2021, to October 15, 2029. It's the sixth cycle, and for this cycle, we are coordinating closely with the land use element update. The reason for that is that we want to make sure that any changes needed to accommodate the housing need are tied together to changes in land use designations, and that those are appropriately reflected in the land use element. And so for this sixth cycle, the, the city of Victorville's fair share or regional housing need allocation is 8,165 units, and so that's what we have to plan for. Next slide, please. And so this is how it's broken out a little bit. So it's not just 8,165 units in general. It's specified by different income levels. And so this table here shows what those income levels are, how they're defined, and then the number of units that the city of Victorville has to plan for at each of those income levels. And then these income levels are based on county household income. Next slide, please. So again, in terms of approaching, we have to identify sites for where there's capacity for new housing development. And this sort of outline here describes our approach to that process. We start with the original housing needs allocation, so we identify the number of units. That's that 8,165, and the breakdown of the numbers of units by each income level. And so they, specifically what we have to do is identify sites, which are one or more parcels of property where housing can be developed, either under the city's existing rules for development, so the existing zoning and land use that Patricia was describing earlier, or under proposed rules that the city has to specify and then create over the next year or so. And so these changes are called programs in both the housing and the land use element. And we'll see later in the presentation, discussion about different options that would fall under those programs. So the next step in terms of fulfilling the housing element requirements is we have to identify what the, what the state defines as the lower-income default density. That's what they call it. And so this is, the state has determined what, what they believe is a realistic density for affordable housing to be developed on. And for the city of Victorville, that determination is 30 units per acre. And so again, per state law, we have to identify sites with that density, and then those sites can count towards the lower-income unit requirements. And so our step-by-step approach towards actually identifying the sites, first, we start with the existing development pipeline. So these are projects that are either proposed or recently approved on a high level, and they haven't received permission to begin construction yet. And so those will count towards the units for the next eight years. Then we look at current high-density areas within the city based on the existing city's regulations. So these are specifically the Civic Center, specific plan area, the Old Town, specific plan area, and the city's current mixed-use zoning. All of those areas allow higher-density development currently. And again, we'll go into more detail on those in a little bit. Next, we look at publicly-owned properties. So these are, in other words, properties owned by the city of Victorville or affiliated entities. And the reason that we look at these is that because the city owns them, they have more control over them, and there's, it makes it easier for the city to make sure that affordable housing gets built on those. And because we want to make sure to fulfill the lower-income requirements, which can be a little harder, we definitely want to make sure to look at city-owned properties where there's potential for affordable housing. Another factor for consideration is the locations of sites near schools, parks, public services, transportation, and other amenities and public services. So like Patricia was saying, there are different considerations for quality of life that we look at, and we want to make sure that where we locate sites for, where we expect housing to be developed, that those sites are located where the future residents of that housing will have relatively easier access to these services and amenities. And another consideration is how do we affirmatively further fair housing? This is a newer requirement that the state has applied to all housing elements. The key core of this requirement is that we want to make sure that our sites, and particularly our lower-income sites, aren't overly concentrated in areas where there's existing concentrated poverty or cost-burdened areas. And so to address this requirement... And so to, to address this requirement and to make sure we don't over concentrate the, the lower income sites, we made sure that sites are located throughout the city. And you'll see some of that in a little bit. So like I said, we'll share the specific sites identified for the site inventory. But first, I want to turn it back over to Patricia to provide more information on the proposed land use changes, which are necessary for, to, to create a site inventory that achieves all of these requirements and goals.
Thank you, Dema. I'd like to spend just a couple of moments sort of familiarizing some of the folks who may not be familiar with your existing land use plan. It sets the stage for what we're going to be talking about in just a couple of minutes. The, your land use categories, they're in the large categories, you have residential, commercial office, industrial, mixed use, public institutional, open space, and then specific plans, which we'll talk about in just a moment. Starting with the residential uses, there are several residential land use designations or categories. Approximately forty percent of your city right now is designated for residential uses. The one, one designation is very low density, and that's two dwelling units per acre. That's kind of considered like a like an estate residential, it's larger lots. Typically, people can, you know, spread out a little bit more. The low density is around five dwelling units per acre. That low density, that's typically what you would see in most single family residential neighborhoods. So that gives you kind of a sense of what that density is. Your medium density designation goes from eight to twelve dwelling units per acre. And that's things like townhouses and duplexes, triplexes, fourplexes, small apartment buildings, low intensity, low density apartment buildings. And you have a high density designation of twelve to twenty dwelling units per acre. And an important thing to note, and we'll be talking about it as, as we move on, is that this land use designation doesn't go up to the thirty dwelling units per acre, that default density that Dema was just talking about. So that's one of the things that we were looking at, and I'll, I'll be talking about the, the proposals that we have to accommodate that. So under your commercial and, and office uses, you have two land use designations. One is office professional and the other one is commercial. And that makes up approximately ten percent of the land area in your community. Industrial uses, you've got light industrial and heavy industrial, that's about five percent of the acre, the land area in the city. You have one existing mixed use designation that it's mixed use, high density, and allows up to sixty dwelling units per acre for residential, and that's just a very, very small, I think we've only got a couple of sites. And it's less, just right, right around one tenth of one percent. Public institutional and open space, there's two designations, one is public slash institutional. And those are things like schools and government buildings and service yards, things like that. And then the other one is open space, and that would be for natural open spaces for resource protection. It includes parks, recreational facilities, natural open spaces, that type of thing. And then you have another category, that's specific plans. And you can see that specific plans make up more than a third of all of the area in the city. And a specific plan is, it's kind of like a combination of a land use plan, it's like a mini land use plan with its own zoning. So everywhere you see on the map, which I'll show you in just a moment, everywhere you see the light purple, that means that those are projects or developments that have just their, their very own unique land use and zoning, and we're not addressing that as part of the land use element update with the exception of one specific plan that we'll be talking about at the end of the presentation. So this is your existing land use map right now. The, the solid blue is the, the outline of the city. This dashed blue is the area that's called, it's called a sphere of influence. And what that is, is that's an area, every, most cities have them, not all of them, if they're, if they're they're landlocked by other cities. But most cities have a sphere of influence, and that's an area that's identified as a logical area where a community will be growing. So we're, we're planning for, we're planning for your city, but we also need to consider the fact that these are some potential growth areas as well. And I just want to call your attention to, as, as you can see, there's a lot of purple. These are your specific plan areas, where you see these, this light buff color and then to the, to the, a light tan and then a medium tan and not to the darker colors, that's residential, and it goes from light, from the lowest intensity all the way to the darkest brown, which is your multifamily residential. And you'll also see, your, the red are the commercial. And for the most part, your land use, your land uses now are lined up so that your commercial is along major corridors. This is the I fifteen corridor, so obviously there's a lot of concentration of commercial at some of the interchanges and then along your, your key corridors, and this is Bear Valley Road down here. So this just gives you a little bit of a snapshot, where you see this dark gray, that's heavy industrial. You've got some light industrial here, light industrial here. And then where there's green sprinkled throughout, that is open space areas, parks and trails, things like that. Just, I just want to pause really quickly, kind of an interesting, fun fact. Of the four hundred eighty one cities in California, Victorville is the fourteenth largest in area. So at seventy four square miles, you are a, a large community in terms of area. So planning for that growth is very important. We mentioned, I think I mentioned, yes, that approximately sixty six percent of the land in your city is still vacant. So directing growth and, and trying to be very thoughtful about how your community is going to grow in the future with such a large city compared to other cities is, it, it's an interesting and an exciting challenge.
Patricia?
Yes?
Can you, can you go back to that map and point out Bear Valley Road one more time, please?
Yes. Bear Valley Road is right here. You see my cursor moving?
I do, thank you.
Is that correct? Yeah, that's correct. Yes. This is, this is Palmdale. This is one eighteen, this is Bear Valley Road, and this is three ninety five. I want to pause a little bit and talk about existing housing types. This is important for the land use element and for the housing element. As I mentioned, approximately forty percent of your land area is devoted to residential land uses. It's not all developed as residential. All those areas are not developed, but of the land that you have developed, almost eighty percent of it is single family residential detached. Just typical, right, you know, single family residential neighborhoods. You have multifamily residential, just over four percent is in the smaller units that I was mentioning before. Things like duplexes, triplexes, fourplexes. And then the larger multifamily residential developments of five units or more, a little over ten percent, about ten and a half percent. And then about the same amount in mobile homes, about four and a half percent as the, the, the low intensity multifamily residential development. So you can see there's a really big gap between the types of housing units that you have between the single family residential and the multifamily residential and, and the mobile home. Before I move on to talk about the proposed land use strategies, I just wanted to pause for a moment and see if anyone had any questions or comments before I move on. I don't see any hands raised, and there's nothing in the chat. Perfect, thank you, Claudia, okay. So now I wanted to just give you an overview of how we approached this land use element update. Obviously, we went back to when I first started talking about why the city was updating the land use element. Those are very, very important. It gives us really good direction on, on how to move forward. So in terms of strategies, how do we want to go about doing this? You're, because you have so much vacant land, plus you also have some areas of the city that have been developed for a while, it didn't seem appropriate to do a wholesale change to the city. So what we wanted to do is we wanted to focus on particular areas and then look at the strategies in order to, to achieve the things that the city wants to achieve as part of updating the land use element. So I'll just go over them briefly, and this is important because this really does set the stage for the rest of the, the discussion. But the first thing we wanted to do was to expand those residential land use designations that, that I talked about earlier and that, that Dema has mentioned. First of all, to provide additional housing opportunities to meet that wide range of needs, to maybe fill in that gap a little bit, if, if, if you are a family or an individual who really doesn't want or need a single family residence, there really aren't that many options or opportunities. So we wanted to provide some additional housing opportunities. Again, we want to make sure that we're supporting that anticipated growth in the most appropriate way, coordinating with the housing element to provide those designations to accommodate the arena. Because remember, I said your, your high density residential right now only goes up to twenty dwelling units per acre, and you need to have thirty dwelling units per acre to at least accommodate some of that housing. Another thing that we, that we want to do is to encourage residential infill in the core areas of the city. There are areas that have already been developed, but there are areas within those developed areas that are still vacant. And what's been happening over the course of the last ten or twenty years is a lot of the new residential development has been moving out into the undeveloped areas of the city. And I'll talk a little bit more about this, but that, that causes a little bit of a stress on the city's infrastructure and also financial obligations for trying to support all of that development moving out. So to the extent that we can really encourage filling in some of those residential areas that have been jumped over, if you will, we're, we're looking for opportunities to do that. And we, well, I'll, I'll tell you what those strategies are in a moment. Another strategy is to add mixed use land use designations. And mixed use really is a, a good opportunity to provide some housing in proximity to those resident serving uses and close to transit, as, as Dema was mentioning. You know, close to parks, close to services, grocery stores, transit, schools. And mixed use is a really good way to do that. It also provides greater flexibility for types of uses to be responsive to the market change. So as I mentioned previously, there's been so much change in online shopping and working from home, going to school, going to school from home. So if you only have, pardon me, right here, if you only have categories that are exclusively commercial or exclusively residential, then you're really limited in, in being responsive to market change. And so mixed use is a really good way to provide that flexibility. Mixed use is also a good tool to help revitalization of some of those underutilized areas in a community. And it's also a really good way to coordinate with the housing element to provide some additional designations to provide that higher, to provide that, the higher arena, without it all going to just a high density residential. We are also proposing to add a health and wellness overlay. And the health and wellness overlay is to try to address some of those quality of life issues. And the medical, the, the medical community and medical uses are changing fairly rapidly right now throughout the country. And it's kind of cutting edge to be looking at health and wellness as bigger than just hospitals and medical centers. And so we have come up with a health and wellness overlay to try to address those issues, to promote health and wellness. And it's not just for the people who are ill, it's the people who are healthy and want to remain healthy, you know, from, from really all life stages as well. And then finally, the proposed, one of our proposed land use strategies is to find ways to encourage that infill in the core of the city before expanding into those less developed areas that I touched on just a moments ago. It, it's a more sustainable way of development. It, the, the more you spread out, the more the, you know, the air pollution, the greenhouse gas emissions end up getting spread out more. Another thing is to take advantage of your circulation system, your, your streets, your roads. As they're built now, you can, if, if, if you're doing infill development, you don't have to rely as much on expanding roadways, which is expensive to build. It's also expensive to maintain. And then if you're, if you're really encouraging infill, it's more likely that someone can walk from a, their, their residence or their school to other services close by instead of, if you're, if you're spread way out and you've got residential that's, that's, that's out in vacant areas of the community, it forces you to drive pretty much everywhere to get what you need. And then ultimately, all of that does make more efficient use of city resources and the infrastructure. As I meant, as I mentioned, if you do infill, you're not having to, to construct the roads and then all of the, the other infrastructure that goes along with it, the water lines, the sewer lines, all of that capacity. So it's just a more efficient use of resources. We know that the city is going to expand, we, we recognize that. But is there a way that we can encourage that expansion in a more efficient way to help manage the city's resources in, in a, in a more financially beneficial way? So now I'm moving on to the, the, the proposed changes for the designations that we're going to be talking about. And this builds on everything that, that I've said leading up to this. Over here on the left, you see existing land use designations that we talked about before. The very low density, low density, medium density, and high density. Over here are the proposed land use designations, and I'm showing you how we go from one to the other. So on the very low density residential, that up to two dwelling units per acre, excuse me, we're not proposing a change there. Low density residential, your standard, single family residential neighborhoods, that zero to five dwelling units per acre, we're not proposing a change to that. What we are proposing is under this low density residential designation, that we provide what we're calling an infill overlay. And that's to encourage the infill that I was mentioning on the previous slide. And an overlay goes over an existing land use designation. So you can take advantage of that overlay, but you're not required to develop to that overlay. So this overlay would go over your low density residential, but it would allow development at up to seven dwelling units per acre instead of the five dwelling units per acre. And that would be just in certain areas of the city, and we have a map a little farther along that shows those areas that we're, that we're talking about. So that would increase the density in the core of the city. We want to encourage that infill, promote that efficient use of existing infrastructure, and provide some additional housing opportunities. The next category is, if you look over here, your next category is medium density residential or MDR. If you notice, between low density and medium density, there's a gap. Low density is zero to five, medium density is eight to twelve. So there's kind of a, a missing middle in there. We talked about missing middle development housing at the first workshop. And so our recommendation is we, 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 excuse me, we rename medium density residential to low medium density residential. We lower that density limit to six to twelve dwelling units per acre to try to fill in that gap. And what that does is that provides a little bit more variety in housing opportunity. And what that does is that provides a little bit more variety in housing opportunities to maybe fill in between the single family residential and that low intensity multifamily residential. It's just a name change and lowering the density rate. Then your high density residential, that's 12 to 20 dwelling units per acre, we're not suggesting any change to that other than the name. So this, this becomes, the one above becomes low medium density. This becomes medium density residential, same density. And then we're adding a new high density residential land use designation that would be the 20 to 30 dwelling units per acre, brand new designation. And what that does is that increases that upper range of residential density to accommodate that, the lower income arena that Dima had mentioned. It's that lower income 30 dwelling unit per acre default density. And it also does provide some additional housing opportunities. Many times seniors, if they choose not to be in their single family residence anymore, it's too much for them to keep up or they, you know, they don't want to be isolated in a house. Multifamily residential is a really good way to accommodate that transition from single family residential to being able to stay in a community, the community that you want to be in, but you don't want that, that single family residence. So we see many senior housing projects at being at a little bit higher density than is typically provided for in what would be your new medium density residential. So again, just more opportunities. I'm paused right now before I move on to the mixed use. Does anyone have any questions on what I've talked about so far?
No? I don't see any hands raised and there's nothing in the chat.
Okay, thank you. So now I'm going to
This is Commissioner Rob Kerr. I don't know if you can hear me.
Yes. Picking up a little bit. I'm not hearing anything.
No.
About now, you able to hear anything?
It's very garbled.
And now we don't hear anything. Scott, do you think we should move on?
Can we unmute?
Yes, at this point, I think he's trying to fix his connection. But if, if he
You can come back to the slide.
Yes, and we could come back once it's fixed. And also he could try to put his comment right now in the chat. But go ahead and move forward if there's no other comments and we can always circle back.
Okay, great. This very bright and cheerful screen is what we're recommending for the mixed use. Over here in this column is your existing land use mixed use designation. And as I mentioned, that's that high density up to 60 dwelling units per acre, which is three times your highest multifamily residential currently. But we're proposing up to 30. So what we're suggesting is we add two mixed use designations that are less intense than this one. Mixed use high density would change to an MU3, which would be the most intense. It would still stay that 60 dwelling units per acre. But so only the name changes really. And we're, and we're not talking about adding this land use designation to any other areas in the city other than where it applies now. You know, unless we receive feedback from the community and the commission that you would, that you'd like to pursue that. So what we did was we added two new ones. One is mixed use one. So this would be the least intensive. Brand new land use designation, proposing up to 15 dwelling units per acre, maximum of three stories. And MU1 is, as I said, it's the least intense. And that would be more of a mix of neighborhood serving commercial uses, really supporting the residents and their day to day needs. You could have a variety of the lower density housing to encourage revitalization, to provide some of those additional opportunities for housing. And again, as I mentioned, to support the, to provide that flexibility. Big box retailers, large intensive types of uses would not be allowed in the MU1. It really is lower density and lower intensity, really trying to support neighborhood serving uses. A mix of uses can be vertical or horizontal. And I'll, I'll show you some examples of that in the next couple of slides. And the mixed use allows, mixed use one would allow mixed use. So that would be residential and non-residential together. Or you could have standalone residential, or you could have standalone commercial. So again, really providing that flexibility to, to, to support a changing market and changing development trends and land use trends. Mixed use two is also a proposed new designation. That would be 15 to 30 dwelling units per acre, maximum of four stories. You see that, that 30 number again, again, being consistent with what's needed for the housing element. That would provide neighborhood and community serving uses, more intensive, potentially more intensive uses, providing a variety of medium density residential. Again, big box retailers would not be, would be prohibited. This would accommodate that lower income rate, a default density of the 30 dwelling units per acre. Again, with that, those, that flexibility, it could encourage revitalization. We're looking for a mix of vertical or horizontal, just like MU1. And we would also allow a mix of uses, the commercial and non-residential and commercial, standalone residential or commercial. And I would like to mention, even though on your map right now, your land use map, you only have one mixed use designation. You, there are several specific plans within your city right now that do allow mixed use up to that 30 dwelling units per acre. So even though this is new to the, the land use map, the general land use map, it's not new to your city. You have the civic center specific plan and the old town specific plan do allow mixed use at up to 30 dwelling units per acre. So it's kind of an expansion of something that you're already doing, just expanding it into other areas of the city. And let me show you some examples of horizontal and vertical mixed use. Oftentimes when people hear mixed use, they think, oh, it's just, you know, you've got, you've got commercial on the ground floor and you've got some residential above. And we see a lot of this, especially when it, when it first started becoming popular in Southern California and in more suburban communities, oftentimes there, you know, we'll just be honest. A lot of these built, a lot of these storefronts can be vacant. So we're looking for other alternatives where it works, whether it's, it's in a more concentrated, a more walkable area in downtown areas where they're, whether they're smaller downtown areas like, like your old town or whether it's downtown LA. It can work very well in some of those types of areas. Not, doesn't always work as well on long commercial corridors. This is another example over here on the right. This is kind of a live work type use where you've got low intensity offices and shops, little restaurants and things on the lower floor. And then people living above. And in many instances, the same person who lives above either rents or owns this entire unit so that they can live and work in the same place. This is very popular for people who, who like to have their own office businesses or artists or even, even restaurant owners. This is another version of that vertical mixed use. This is an area that would be, would work really well for a downtown area or an area that is trying to, as it's developing, even a new area, as it's developing, really trying to be more walkable. And we're seeing throughout the country, these walkable communities are really gaining in popularity. Here are a couple of site plans. This is just looking down on a plan. Here's an example of a smaller mixed use that is side by side. This is horizontal, where you see the yellow, this gold color, that's residential. And then right here in the corner, she's got commercial. This could be straightened out. This, this could work nicely along a commercial corridor. It could also work nicely in a downtown area or a mixed use area. And this isn't, this is not a really intensive development. And moving up here, this is an example of a shopping center that wanted to incorporate mixed use and residential in the shopping center because of the fact that in, in many areas of the California and even the United States, some of the existing malls that are just standalone malls, especially because of COVID and because of online shopping, some of those malls are struggling a little bit. And so to provide mixed use really gives them a chance to reinvigorate the mall and bring more people in to actually utilize the, the services and the, the commercial uses. So you see, this is an example, this is a Macy's for Home. This used to be a sea of parking. What they've done is they've added, they've got a little standalone retail building here. But here is a hotel and retail. Over here is residential and in this case retail. But there's no reason why this couldn't be just a standalone residential building. Same here, residential and retail. You've got open space. It's, they've, they've made this a lot more walkable. Here's a creative office and retail space. So it's really, as you can see, how it can be a tool for revitalization, whether it's a commercial corridor or whether it's a shopping center or a mall. And then here's another example. This is also off the 15, but it's down in Riverside County. If you're familiar with the Corona area. This is a large area that's been building out over, I guess, probably about the last 10 years or so, those lagoes. There's a lot of commercial over here. These are commercial buildings, commercial buildings here where my cursor is. Then you'll see multifamily residential, some smaller scale, higher density, single family residential, kind of some infill there. Then you get to apartment buildings. This is a different type of multifamily residential. And then down here is also some new multifamily residential. This is a shot of this shopping center taken from right here at Temescal Canyon Road, looking in. So over here where this little blue is where my cursor is, that is Trader Joe's. And there's other, there's a lot of other commercial and retail and services in this area. If you see way back here, that is the residential. You get down here to the lower slide, that zooming in, we're farther down. We're about where my cursor is here. Trader Joe's is behind us. This is also more commercial use. But you can see you've got residential here and it continues on beyond. So the people who are living here, even though they don't have commercial on the ground floor, this is still residential over here and commercial over here. They can just walk across the street and go to Trader Joe's. They can walk across the street and go to a store or a restaurant. But this is how mixed use development is starting to change and adapt and expand in areas that are growing. Like Riverside County is growing the way your community is growing. So you can see that mixed use isn't just one thing. It's a concept that really does provide some opportunities. And whoops, and that can really make it nice for people who live there who can just walk to services that they want. You know, here's a Tap House Brewery. There's, I know that there's movie theaters farther, farther along. So it really does provide some opportunities there. Last slide, talking about some of the changes that we're proposing. This office professional designation. A lot of cities used office professional over the years, over the last, you know, 30 years or so as a transition between a higher intensity commercial that might not be as desirable up against single family residential. Because of the changing, changing nature of the market and how people are working differently, office professional is not being utilized as much as it used to be. And the, some of the office professional that you, you don't have a lot of office professional right now in your city. And much of what you do have is vacant because it's really a restrictive designation. It's not responsive to the current land use trends and the market demands. So we're suggesting it be deleted. This existing OP designation, those areas that are designated could change to other designations such as mixed use one, mixed use two and commercial. And we've got some examples of that that I'll show you in just a moment. And we've also, we're also proposing that health and wellness overlay that I mentioned before. Again, it would be an overlay. So whatever designation that is underneath it could stay. If it's commercial and, and the, the, the property owners or the developers did not want to take advantage of the overlay, they wouldn't have to. But it really provides some opportunities that aren't available right now. Because as I said, we're trying to move toward that trend of the way medical healthcare is moving in the future. So this would be not only for local, for, for local residents, but hospitals are often regional draws. So you bring people in from outside the community for hospitals and medical centers. And then oftentimes when they're there, they'll go to the mall or they'll go to the shopping center or they'll go to the Costco or whatever while they're in your community. So it does, it does provide the benefits. We, what we're proposing is that this health and wellness overlay would apply to existing and proposed hospitals and medical facilities. And I'll show you that on a map in a moment. And we're really expanding the type of use that would be allowed to really capitalize on that health and wellness. So not just hospitals and medical centers, supportive offices, supportive medical centers. There's emerging medical facilities, healthcare clinics. You could do community centers there, extended care, nursing facilities, pharmacies. Medical uses are moving more toward 24/7 centers. Oftentimes people who are working can't get away to, you know, have imaging, whether it's a CT scan or other kind of imaging dialysis. Those are opportunities. You could put senior housing in that area. Daycare is a really appropriate location, a use for the health and wellness overlay. It could be adult daycare, child daycare, specialized daycare. For instance, Alzheimer's care, living facilities. And then restaurants and juice bars while you're there. If you're, if you're working there or you're living there, it would be nice to be able to walk over and, you know, get a bite to eat, go to a grocery store and have other supportive retail and things like gyms, fitness studios, recreation trails, really trying to embrace that overall quality of life concept that is so important to maintaining health. We're also suggesting that a wider range of housing could be integrated into that development, not just senior housing, but all types of, of housing. One of the things that it could do too would be to function as a sustainability hub. If you're really focusing on health and wellness, you could promote active transportation, walking, riding your bikes, open space, including EV charging stations, you know, and maybe even things like edible landscaping. Instead of just an ornamental tree, what about putting orange trees? You know, and maybe even things like edible landscaping, instead of just an ornamental tree, what about putting orange trees in there, just as an example? So really trying to have it be a really special and unique health and wellness oriented areas in the city. If someone wants to take advantage of the health and wellness overlay, we're suggesting that it require some kind of an integrated development plan. Right now, the city uses planned unit developments or PUDs to to encourage and to facilitate that integrated development. You could also do something like a specific plan if you wanted to. Or you could do potentially a master plan. So these are our concepts that will then lead into how we are talking about implementing those from a location based perspective. So before I move on, I think turning it over to Dima in just a moment, but before I move on, does anyone have any questions? And were we able to get the commissioner back on the line?
Um, this is Rob here again. Is this sound better? Are you able to hear me?
Yes, absolutely. You're clear as a bell now.
Okay, I apologize to everyone. You know, I got tripped up on some scheduling and I got stuck in traffic. So I was, I was trying to handle it while in the car, but I'm home now and I think I've got a better signal. I have been able to see the entire presentation, by the way, so thank you for that. The only questions I had at this point from what you've been talking about was, and I may have just missed it. Have we talked about the industrial yet?
We we have not. Right now, we're not proposing to make any changes to the industrial land use designations, but certainly if you've got thoughts, comments, suggestions on that, now that that's what the purpose of this workshop is to hear your perspectives on all of, on everything.
Okay, yeah, well, if this is the right time, then I don't mind speaking up on some thoughts on the industrial, you know, looking at looking at commercial and retail specifically, like like medium and big box retail. Traditional shopping center stuff, you know, I think we all kind of agree that we're seeing that back off somewhat in this in this new world of of online. And, you know, talking about how a lot of the the retail and the office professional, and I think even the industrial really does have a significant factor onto the placement of housing and, you know, quality of life and jobs, location wise. You know, we're just seeing a lot of other communities throughout Southern California becoming real industrial heavy, especially I'm talking light industrial with distribution. And we're seeing quite a bit of that has come to the high desert. And we're seeing reports, there's quite a bit more big box industrial coming. That's a lot of jobs. And when we looked at the some of the the maps and percentages of our current zoning, if I remember, I think it was like 5% of Victorville's land area is designated for industrial. Just wondering if we need to look at that and if that should be adjusted through this process as well. Or do we have enough, you know?
Yeah. That's that's a good point. I Scott, I don't know if you if you wanted to speak to that, but I know that you do have a, one of the specific plans is pretty heavily focused on on light industrial.
That's true. And those those numbers that were provided were Commissioner Kurth referring to just 5% of the city was designated for industrial. It is somewhat deceiving because we have that large number of over a third of the area of our city is zoned specific plans. So we do have large areas still undeveloped within the SCLA specific plan, which is primarily all industrial. And I think we'll touch on it at the end of this this workshop. Another opportunity would be the Desert Gateway Specific Plan. That's the northern end of the city as you go up Starter Wells Road. So those are some opportunity areas, but I also think that as we go through these slides and opportunity areas that we have ready to present today. If if the commission or public has input on areas that they think industrial can be expanded within kind of the core areas of the city. Yeah, we'd love to hear it, but we we do agree that that is that is a trending market. We just think in some aspects that we we still have a lot of undeveloped industrial land to accommodate that growth, but it may not be in the city core. If that's what, you know, you're envisioning it to be. So hope that that provided some guidance, but I think we can get into these slides. We'd love to hear from everybody.
Yes, thank you.
And yeah, Patricia, before you move on, I just wanted to say, I don't see any other raised hands, but we had a couple of comments in the chat from one of our participants who responded to both when you were describing the kind of the horizontal mixed use, you know, development and showed some photos. Liked that, said it sounded cool. And then the same with when you were describing the health and wellness overlay. So the two kind of thumbs up for those two specific land uses.
Great, thank you.
That's, yeah, that's all we've had so far.
Excellent. One of the things I'd like to mention too, under the the mixed use is that one of the trends is artisan manufacturing. So I I know it's almost like we're going to the two different scales. We've got the the light industrial and the large, the larger distribution facilities. And but a lot of cities are embracing more like artisans, small, one or two, you know, up to up to 10 people. And there, there's been a lot of research that's been done that those kinds of uses that really don't have a lot of externalities. They don't make a lot of noise. There isn't a lot of smell. There isn't pollution. That they can fit very nicely in mixed use areas. And so that might be something we've talked internally about potentially including that as part of revitalizing some of these areas. It it can be really beneficial for the community, for entrepreneurship, and it also can attract tourism. So we're thinking about including those as well. And you do have, it's not a separate land use designation, but you have a zone that is under the commercial land use designation, but it's a commercial manufacturing land use designation. So maybe capitalizing on that a little bit more might be another opportunity to, as we're looking at trying to provide employment opportunities at all scales, really from the smaller scale up until all the way up to the the larger scale where where you've got those those large distribution facilities that can really provide additional jobs. So let's see. What I would like to do is just very briefly, I showed you the side by side kind of as we went, but this is this is your entire land use designation side by side. So this is on on the left side, your existing land use categories. And I'll just briefly go over this show side by side, what we're talking about doing. Very low stays to very low, low density stays low density. We're adding that low density infill overlay. Medium density goes to low medium density and the the range lowers a little bit to kind of to to fill in that missing middle. High density goes to medium density, the density stays the same, pardon me. There's a new high density that goes 20 to 30 dwelling units per acre. We didn't talk about this. This, you have what is called a mixed density. It's not mixed use, it's mixed density. And it's it 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 applies to only a handful of areas in the city for very, very specific reasons. So we're really not touching on that, but I just wanted to at least acknowledge it because it's it's there. For commercial office, as I said, we're proposing to eliminate the the office professional. So we would just have one commercial land use designation. The industrial would stay the same, heavy and light. This shows the the three mixed use designations. And then when we get down here to the public institutional and open space, as I mentioned before, you have two now, the public institutional and the open space. One of the things that we noticed is as we were beginning to work on the land use element is that you have got a couple of utility corridors, the the kind of the high voltage transmission lines that sort of cross in your city. Right now, those are designated a surrounding land use designation. So those utility quarters right now, if it's if it's next to single family residential, it's designated single family residential. If it's next to commercial, it's designated commercial. So you've got a lot of acreage right now that is under these big transmission lines that will never be developed with those land uses. So our thought, and I want to mention those utility quarters have been identified on some in in some of your other plans as being great locations for trails, recreational trails, bicycle trails. They're they're used that way in other communities. So we thought it would make sense to create a new designation. This is just sort of a tentative name right now, utility quarter open space. So rather than having the map show all of those utility corridors with residential or commercial or industrial or whatever it would happen to be, where it would never develop that way. We thought it would make a lot of sense to show those utility corridors as a special kind of open space. It's a lot easier to look at a map and go, oh, okay. Because of the fact that those are potentially providing corridors for for active transportation, for biking and walking, it would really be nice to see those designated. And then also you're taking off land use designations that will never be built there. So we're not showing these on the map right now tonight. But I just wanted to let you know that this is a proposal so that the next time that you see the the land use element and you see the map revised, you'll be seeing those utility open space quarters. And the specific plans, you you have specific plans now, you'll have specific plans in the future that the the designation really didn't change, only potentially a specific plan that Scott had mentioned that we're going to talk about in a minute.
Patricia?
Yes.
This is Commissioner Thomas. I was wondering now, on these utility quarter open spaces, are those in existence in other other cities of others?
Yes.
With a special designation, okay, and it's working out pretty well for them?
It's working out very well for them, yeah. It's a, it's a great way to, because you can't do anything with it with the property underneath it. I mean, you know, we've sometimes sometimes you'll see nurseries and and things like that, but it's many communities are really taking advantage of those corridors to do open space, to do trails and bike ways and having that kind of a designation just identifies to the community the opportunities that are there. And then we can write policies in the land use element that help to implement that. And if it's shown on a map, if you're looking for maybe working with the utilities to come up with grants to fund that, if it's already shown on a map and the city has already said, this is, this is a really excellent resource that we want to take advantage of. And we've identified it on our map as that utility quarter open space. But the the grantors are more likely to say, oh, they've really been thinking about this. And it sort of gives you an advantage if you're applying for grants for funding to to do those kinds of trails and and other types of uses underneath the corridors. Anything else before we move on?
I don't see any hands raised and there's nothing in the chat.
Thank you.
I would like, sorry to interject real quick. I know that we have about 20 more slides to go through, which will have a lot of discussion on. So commissioners, if please speak up if you wanted to take a quick recess at all. But otherwise, we could keep plowing through.
Okay, Dima, I'm going to turn it back over to you for the next couple of slides.
Great. Thank you, Patricia. So the focus of tonight's meeting is, of course, the the land use element and the land use designations. But because of that intersection with the housing element and changes to the and accommodating the the future housing and how that relates to the land use designations, we wanted to explain a little bit more the the housing site inventory. So those are the the sites that we identified. And particularly where the in density requirement requires us to revise or add new residential land use categories or new mixed use land categories. We're going to focus on those areas. If we can go to the next slide. Thank you. So we split the city into a few sections just to make it a little easier to see the map. And I know it's still a little bit small. But shown here is the northern part of the city. So the Palmdale Road is near the bottom there. And then the SCLA airport is, yes, thank you. And the SCLA airport is just off the image on the top left. And so these are the, some of the sites that we identified within this area of the city. You can see generally, we try to focus in on infill areas where there are areas that are a little farther out that is usually because there was some proposed development for those sites already. And so that's where we talked about that development pipeline. We incorporated those because we expect them to be built within the next few years. And so they're a little bit farther out, but generally we tried to focus on infill areas. Particularly, I want to point out here, you can see the Old Town area over to the right. Right there, right? And then a little left and down from there is the Civic Center area. And so one thing, in case the legend's a little hard to read, we have the color coding here is moderate plus income sites are are colored in blue. So these are sites where we identify as candidates for moderate or above moderate housing. And then the yellow is the lower income housing. So that's where we have that higher density that can accommodate low income or very low income. And then in green, we have mixed income where there could be a mix of both of those. And I just want to make clear that the the way that these sites are designated for these different income levels, that's again, part of the state requirement. It does not in any way limit the the property owners or the developers to build one or the other. And and so they still, property owners and developers still have options in terms of what they want to build with regard to that. But this is where we thought, again, these would be good candidate sites. And so again, those higher density sites, that's where we have the lower income sites. Next slide, please. So here now we've shifted to the western part of the city. You can see the Interstate 15 along the right side there, and then Palmdale Road at the top. And so where we tried to focus in those higher density areas where we thought would be good locations for housing because they're close to amenities, the shopping centers, schools and parks, et cetera, that we talked about. Where we thought these would be areas that would be appropriate for higher density. I just want to talk through a few of them. And then we'll go into more specifically, Patricia will go through more specifically what the land use designation changes might look like for those areas. So we have the Walmart Supercenter area where the where Palmdale Road intersects with Route 395. That's at the top center there, exactly. And then going south or or down and to the right, we have the St. Mary's campus is towards the bottom, near the city boundary, right there. So that's where we have the planned St. Mary's Hospital campus and higher density there would help to support the development of that area. And then another area a little farther north and east of there is Dunia Plaza nearby Victor Valley Mall. And then so a little bit west of there where we have those green sites. And that's where we identified it as a potential area for increased density. So again, because all of these areas are close to existing commercial sites and and other amenities, as well as adjacent to future large scale developments that are anticipated. That's sort of the reasoning why we looked at those areas specifically. On the next slide. And finally, this is the eastern portion of the city. So we have Bear Valley. And finally, this is the eastern portion of the city. So we have Bear Valley Road at the the bottom edge of the image. And then Old Town is just off at the top center of the image. And so here, you can see again, the Civic Center area near the top there. So there's some higher density there, but that's under the existing specific plan. So so the focus here in in terms of land use changes would be at that bottom area, which is where the Bear Valley, sorry, Desert Valley Hospital is located. And so we thought because of the adjacency to the hospital, and there's actually a proposed development in the pipeline near in that area, that that would be a good candidate for for higher density residential development. And we didn't some of the land use changes proposed, which you'll see aren't limited just to residential land uses. So some of them are suggested for increased density, partly to help support revitalization of the existing commercial uses in those areas. And this will help provide more amenities and services near surrounding residential areas, particularly near lower income residential areas. And so we'll we'll see some of what that looks like on the following slides. And I'll turn it back over to Patricia.
Okay, thank you. So now we're going to get down to the sites. We've we've provided all of the the context in the background. And so now we want to talk about the sites that we're suggesting for up. We're calling them opportunity areas because right now, that's really what they are. We have opportunities for change. These aren't necessarily the only ones, but these are the ones that that we definitely wanted to bring to your attention this evening. If if you've got some suggestions for other changes, we would love to hear that as well. I just wanted to mention, so the opportunity areas, I'll be I'll be showing those. We provided options for potential changes. In some cases, we provided a couple of alternatives because as we were talking about it internally, we said, well, it could be this or it could be that. So we wanted to give the the community and the the commissioners an opportunity to give us some input on that, some feedback on that. In other cases, we didn't provide alternatives, we just have a proposal. But again, that doesn't mean that there aren't that that there couldn't be alternatives. So we're just really looking for your input and your direction. And ideally, we'll come to some kind of a consensus to give us direction to move forward.
Patricia? Excuse me, this Claudia. We did have a comment that came through in the chat. And the reason I interrupted you is because it it really referred to Dima's presentation. So so Dima, the the question was, can social services and public transportation support the proposed low income sites?
Yeah, that's a great question. Absolutely. I would say where we see social services clustered a little bit is in that Civic Center area. And so we do have a lower income sites in that in that area, also supported by the higher density that's allowed there. And in terms of public transportation, which generally follows the major corridors of the city. Again, we have the sites that I pointed out are all are generally located along the major corridors. And so they would be relatively accessible for transit as well. So those are definitely public services, social services and public transportation are part of the amenities that we looked at when when identifying sites for the site inventory. You're welcome.
Thanks.
Ready for me to move on?
Yeah, that's good. Thank you.
Thank you. This is the first opportunity area. Before I get started, I I want to just let you know that where you see over here on this on these slides where you see this black outline. These are the sites that that Dima just showed on the the previous three slides. Not all opportunity areas have the housing sites. But where they do include the housing sites, you'll see them in this black outline. So this is the first opportunity area. For each one of them, we're showing you what the existing land use designation is. This is taken directly from your existing land use map. Opportunity area one is kind of on the northeast corner of the three ninety five and Palmdale Road. So this is just to provide context, this is the Walmart Supercenter. So this this brown, it would be the density on your map right now, it's it's your high density, but it's actually that median density up to the twenty dwelling units per acre. So that's what this is. And then this red is commercial. So alternative one would be to take this whole area that is commercial now and turn it into mixed use two. That's the that's the mixed use that is the neighborhood and community serving a little little bit more intense than the mixed use one. And that allows up to the thirty dwelling units per acre. So we're suggesting that one of the alternatives would be to have this entire area changed to mixed use two. And that would provide an opportunity for the densities that are needed for the housing element in in these two areas. These are the ones that are requiring the higher density. These are not, which is why they're not changed and why they're still light. And then the mixed use would extend up Highway three ninety five up to Hook Boulevard. Because it provides some potential incentive to do some development along here. There's a lot of vacant commercially designated property along the three ninety five, both north and south. And we were thinking, since this is an area that's already developed and you've got a concentration of commercial here, the commercial hasn't really expanded much beyond that. So maybe putting mixed use two would provide the opportunities for the higher density residential as well as some commercial. So that is our alternative one. And then I'm going to go to alternative two. And then we can talk about the the two alternatives and see what you think, what your thoughts are, you know, what you're if you have any preferences one way or another, or if you'd like us to consider something different, maybe an alternative three or four that we haven't included here. So the next alternative, it's the same opportunity area. And what we would propose would be to still keep this commercial the mixed use two for that flexibility. But then these two areas that are designated for the for residential just make those go to the new high density residential. So this property and this property would be limited to a multifamily residential at up to thirty dwelling units per acre, the new high density residential. And you can see that. So we've got all mixed use two, alternative one, or partially mixed use two and partially high density residential. And I'd like to pause and I believe we're going to ask for public comments first, and then we'll turn it over to the planning commission for discussion. Any comments or questions, suggestions from the public?
I don't see any raised hands.
Okay. All right. Then in that case, I will turn it back over to the planning commission and see, see what your thoughts are.
Um, this is Commissioner Rob Kurth, if you can hear me.
Yes.
Yeah, okay, I was wondering, um, are we are we about at the end of this? Are we taking questions up to this point? Or are we are we at a wrap up point and all questions?
No, what what we're doing is we've got quite a few, we've got quite a few opportunity areas. So we are going through, we're going to be going through each opportunity area one at a time. I was just pausing to see if if anybody had any comments on this. I can go through all of them and then we can come back and talk about them, or we can just there there are quite a few there. I think I think we've got ten. So I I just thought we would pause after each one and see if there were any any comments.
Okay, yeah, that's that's kind of what I was wondering. And that that's fine. Either ways, fine with me. I leave that up to our our chair, I guess. Thanks.
Okay, great, thank you.
Can you go back to alternative one, way alternative one?
And if I could just summarize between the two. Alternative one allows for more flexibility. So all of the area that's that's shown in the dark pink there could develop as commercial or could develop as residential or a mix of those two. Whereas alternative two is more restrictive to focusing the high density residential within those brown areas.
Those are the housing element sites that Dima had referred to.
So it it may be in this circumstance that the commission may not have a preference on either alternative. But we would like to know if you have questions, concerns about what's proposed here. Again, this isn't sites that we have active developers asking to to build in this area, but due to the fair housing rules of the state, we have to spread some of the arena allocation to to all areas of the city. And since this is located near a a large shopping center, we don't think it's, you know, all of it viable for commercial development. So we're looking at providing that flexibility to allow the development community to to look at these sites more for development.
I have a question. Is that a solar farm? Is that an existing solar farm there, Scott?
Yes, that is a solar farm. Seneca Road to the north, there is a circulation element street. And then so is Mesa Linda Avenue, which will connect all the way down to Palmdale Road. And then you have Cantina, which goes alongside Walmart. And it actually will dogleg to the west and then head north along the eastern side of that M two zone. So you're have, yes, yeah, run north along that point. So there is a good master circulation plan in that area. And then also somewhat of a buffer is another high utility power corridor. It's at Edison easement that you see kind of going diagonal through the site, yes.
So how do we categorize the solar farms? Are they light industrial or?
In this case, our municipal code allows solar farms when a percentage of that solar farm abuts utility corridor, and that can be permitted in a in a residential district. So in this case, that solar farm abuts a utility corridor on the on the west end. And it's not shown on this aerial, but it there's also a utility corridor that runs kind of to the northeast, yeah.
Yeah.
Yes.
So that actually takes up quite a bit of of land because the solar farm looks like it has a big gap on the west side to the the power line corridor. So is does that all get incorporated in into? I just don't see housing going in that that of course, it looks small on the map, but I'm I'm sure it's a large area.
Yeah, I believe I believe the solar facility had a potential to expand. But it is, yeah, it is a unique area that right there where there's utility corridors on each side. And then, yeah, we took advantage of that proximity for these solar farms to connect to the grid at these utility corridors. But yeah, I believe there is some areas for residential to develop. Yes, they would have quiet neighbors, let's put it that way. They're living next to solar farm.
But they they it does supply the availability to expand the solar farm.
Yes, I believe it's not shown in this aerial, but I believe the commission, this is, you know, probably seven years ago now, but when this solar field was approved, there was an expansion at least to the east that they haven't built out yet.
Okay.
And I, this is Commissioner Kurth again, just before we move through to the next existing sites versus the alternative sites. I wanted to just verify and clarify one thing. It was mentioned that this offers the flexibility of existing zoning to the new alternate zoning. And for example, once this once this element, which becomes part of the updated general plan, is finalized and submitted and done. It would that make, for example, on three ninety five, would that commercial go away and it would be one hundred percent MU two thirty fifteen to thirty dwelling units? Or would those property owners still have the ability to you know, produce commercial, you know, or a higher density residential? Is it? Is there flexibility there? That that was unclear to me.
Yes, the flexibility is there. The mixed use, how we're proposing it is you would allow commercial, standalone commercial, you could do standalone residential, or you could do the mix of uses, a residential and a commercial on the same the same development. Or in the same area. So they would still have the ability to do commercial if they wanted to.
Okay, and that's as I see that, you know, is that kind of typical? When you guys looked at this on existing commercial sites, whereas the H D R on the alternative, that's already residential, the H D R is just changing changing the density. But when when we're looking at other commercial sites throughout these existing sites and alternatives, is that kind of a theme that 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 it will be flexibility with MU?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Okay, I I don't see any raised hands. Are there any other comments before we move on?
I I would like to know from the commission now that we've started to talk about the flexibility that the mixed use allows, is that something that the commission in general is supportive of? Because I know that that has been something that the development community has asked for. Because it is somewhat of a daunting task for a developer to go through a later general plan amendment. If the market trends want them to build commercial or the market trends want them to build residential or a mix of both. So if our general plan from the start has a mixed use designation, that alleviates the requirement for a developer to to go through a whole general plan update to to allow for development. So again, we're trying to bring some 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 surety to some consistency, some clarity to the development community so they they know from the start before they start spending any money on developing plans that the city has has built in flexibility for them to proceed. So I just want to throw that out there. I don't expect a formal motion, but if because we'll start going through more of these slides, which has those mixed use designations. So you got to think of mixed uses being flexible for the development community. Again, this is just starting process of laying down a land use designation. We would still need to develop the actual standards associated with these districts. And then ultimately, the planning commission, when a project comes in, would review those projects to make sure that there's still the quality that we expect and would add to the community. So I don't want the commission to think that this is So I don't want uh the commission to think that this is a a free pass for developers to come in and build whatever they want. Uh this is just a starting point for the city to develop standards for for mixed use. But it it does allow that flexibility for a developer to come in and ask for residential or commercial.
Um uh I would just like to make one comment, Scott, those um. Those photos of existing mixed use you or Patricia, you pointed out the one in Corona. That that's all fantastic, but um it's just my personal opinion that that's. For a higher income demographic than than one might think, uh I just don't. See that happening with a low income demographic, uh I mean, that's just my personal opinion and um. Well anyways, that's my comment.
And keep in mind too that this is a long range plan, w- we don't expect. You know, if if this plan is adopted to have the development community come out and start building on all of these sites. Keep in mind, we have had a multifamily development, uh a sizable one that that's built within the last seven years. So uh again, in trying to meet arena numbers and. And uh you know, meet the state's standards to accommodate this future growth, we're just trying to provide more flexibility. So if we do have developers out there that are wanting to build, uh we have available sites for them. That maybe come on the market, um and again, we'll still have those quality standards to ensure that. There's uh proper amenities for these developments, uh but we also think the commercial. Component of a mixed use zone is an amenity for for the residents because they can walk to it. It's it's, you know, blended into their their community setting.
And this is a uh Commissioner Rob Kurt again, um I think to answer Mr. Webb's question on. You know, heading heading on this direction, what we've seen so far on these sites, um I'm I'm in agreement, I like the flexibility. Um you know, especially looking at a um OA dash one, it's on the screen right now. We know that all along Highway three ninety-five, it's it's very, very difficult uh to get access and to get commercial. You know, businesses to have access off of that through Caltrans. And so it may make sense to have a higher density along there, but then have the flexibility. To service those people with some some pocket commercial that they may be through that strip and it just may be. Um community services or or maybe food uses or something like that, so I. I'm I'm in support of what I've seen so far, if that helps answer your question.
Just thank you.
Okay, Patricia, I don't see any more comments right now, I think we could probably move on to the next one.
Yeah, opportunity area two, uh this is diagonally across from opportunity area one. This is Palmdale Road and the three ninety-five, so we were right up here before and um. This is, this is the twenty dwelling units per acre, commercial twenty dwellings per acre, um commercial and then a. Specific plant area here and the our proposal, we don't have an alternative, but as I said. You know, we can add an alternative, no problem, it the suggestion is to take this entire area. And turn it into uh mixed use two, you can see these, some of these parcels are. It with the black outlines, those are parcels that have been identified on that in the housing element for the higher density. So this would accommodate that and then um because this is a separate parcel and it doesn't face Palmdale Road. Um the suggestion is that we put high density residential right here. And I'd like to to uh see if anyone has any comments on that, members of the public and then the planning commission. Any thoughts or comments, questions?
I don't see any raised hands from the the public or anything in the chat.
Thank you, so we'll turn it over to the to the planning commission, commissioners, do you have any any um? Thoughts on this one, is it something that that you would support or you'd like to talk about some some alternatives?
And again, this is similar to opportunity area number one. Uh most of the area or some of the area was zoned for multifamily already, uh we're trying to provide some flexibility. And adding that mixed uh use two, so that would allow commercial uh and or. Uh multifamily up to thirty units per acre.
Yeah, I I can make one comment on that, I do like uh the way the consultants explained that typically, we're looking at. Uh the higher, maybe the highest of the high density, the closest to the commercial nodes, which looking at this one would be Palmdale. The three ninety-five, we know that's a major commercial intersection, um I like seeing the higher density closer to that. Uh commercial because we know a lot of the higher density may be uh people of lower income and maybe um older people. It may be people that would prefer to walk, you know, walking patterns uh to shopping areas, you know. Versus a single family that might be a little farther out that tend to drive, so I I like that concept that I've been hearing from you.
Any other comments on this one or should I move on? And we can always come back to these.
I think you could probably move on.
Yeah, I I think we should move on, there we go.
Okay, great. This is farther east on Palmdale Road and um. This is the opportunity area that we're talking about, as you as you look over on alternative one, you can see the outline of the. Housing element sites that Ema had referenced before, the ones that are in the the bright pink. Those are the ones that have been designated for higher density and then these are designated for um that lower. Density, so we're not proposing any changes here, so this area. Uh alternative one would be to take this whole area and make it mixed use two, one of the things that we were thinking about is. You've got commercial around it and it it, you know, potentially. This corner could could potentially build out commercial, if this were commercial, this could be commercial. You know, we could definitely see that as an opportunity and then maybe um residential behind. Uh this one is not quite as obvious, this was already designated for um residential. But we thought if this did develop as commercial, we wanted to provide a little bit of flexibility here. So alternative two would be having this entire area go high density residential. And that would be that the thirty dwelling units per acre, and so accommodate the arena as well. So two all, you know, the two different alternatives, certainly we could entertain. Another alternative if if something sounded, if you thought something seemed better. Whoopsie, I went the wrong way, there we go, alternative one or to alternative two, all mixed use two or all make all high density residential. Any um any comments or questions from the community before we go to the commission?
I don't see any raised hands or or comments in the chat.
Commissioners? Any discussion on this?
Yeah, uh um. I like that, um I know you're gonna have some uh low density. There by the high school and um. On the on the south side, but on that north side, uh it looks like it's pretty much uh. Got schools behind it and on to the side of it, so I I. I'm not one for putting high density housing. Uh a near two, right next to existing homes, I don't think. Uh that bodes well with existing homeowners, but I think that's an ideal location right there for the uh. For the the uh um what is that? Multi-unit.
MU two?
Two, yeah.
I think this is uh Rob Kurt again, I think my question would be the um the difference between the MU two and the MDR. Which is the the HDR which is up to thirty um. What what is the benefit to? You you know, look at M MU two, which is up up to thirty and gives the flexibility of other uses. Versus strictly turning it into um. HDR which is just thirty, it's not mixed use, what what are the benefits when we're looking at each of these sites? To say, hey, one should be this, one should be the other, i- in your opinion?
Oh, I could feel that, so uh.
Go ahead.
Yeah, the the benefit is just the flexibility of of the developer being able to build. One or the other or both, uh so um. As you could see, as the market dictates, u- usually we see commercial along the main, the main thoroughfare. So Palmdale Road would likely uh develop, at least at the intersection of Topaz and and Palmdale with with commercial. But where that line stops and work where multifamily starts. Uh we don't know yet and and I think that, you know, working with the developers to create some type of master plan for this area. Would benefit, would benefit the community, benefit uh. The the project when it comes forward, instead of having a hard line that it has to be multifamily or um. Or stop a commercial area like six hundred feet out from the highway, so. Again, the MU two district is is like the ultimate flexibility for a developer. Uh but again, it would would require still city review to make sure it it beats our standards.
And when we're going through these, are we ultimately going to decide between alternative one and number two? Or are both those alternatives going to end up as a possibility in in the final uh the element?
That's a good question, Patricia, were you planning on having the alternatives uh presented as well?
In the in the final element, you need to have a um a definitive land use designation. When we're doing the evaluation of of as part of the environmental assessment for for SEQA. We're doing an environmental impact report on the um the land use element update. And one of the requirements under SEQA is to look at various alternatives. So we would be taking these alternatives and evaluating them under SEQA. But ultimately, the land use element would. Would choose one or the other or or a hybrid or something completely different. You know, another an alternative three, not to not to, you know, make things even more confusing, but. Right now, you've got commercial here and you've got the twenty dwelling units per acre here. Another alternative would be to keep the commercial here and then just change this to the high density residential to get the thirty dwelling units. Um per acre for the for the arena, but ultimately, we need to have a recommendation for. What's in the element, as as I said, the the SEQA document will do an evaluation of alternatives. But you don't have alternatives in the land use element, it's it's, you know, it's one or the other.
So if the commission's receptive to the mixed use designation. To allow that flexibility, we we can take that into consideration as we we finalize uh these sites.
I would uh. I would be okay with the mixed use. I would be okay with the mixed use uh to, I guess. My concern is is Commissioner Kurt indicated before, is the proximity to Silverado High School.
I think we're having an issue.
Um you're in the English translation channel right now. Okay, I think you're good, Commissioner Thomas.
Okay, yeah, my my, I as I was saying, you know, my whole concern is again, the proximity to. Uh that high school with uh high density residential, it. Could be problematic. Uh also, I I would be concerned again with high density uh being in close to the single family. Uh residential in that area too, so I I would have to look at this a little further.
Okay.
Okay, and and keep in mind uh the left, the left-hand screen side of the screen that shows the existing. So it, we have to keep in mind, our our existing general plan already calls for it as as multifamily. And due to the state's requirement for us to have at least a baseline of thirty units per acre, we would be increasing this from twenty to. To thirty units per acre, but the the land use itself really isn't changing from the existing. It it was already multifamily, uh we're just creating slightly more. Dense density allowances, they don't have to build at thirty units per acre, but it allows for that. And uh allows them to have flexibility on where they place commercial on the site. And and to you to your point, as a commissioner, you will absolutely see this again as we develop. The zoning standards for the mixed use development, which could include buffers from adjacent properties. Adjacent land uses and that you would ultimately as a commissioner see this new development. The developer's proposal and how they would actually build the site out. So this is just again, a first step of just, let's look at the density and what the land use should be. And then we'll have to, you know, work out over the next year as this as this uh general plan evolves, we'll we'll dig into the. The actual zoning standards for the mixed use to ensure that we have uh like the buffers, I think that you were referencing. So it doesn't impact uh adjacent uses negatively.
So Scott, the the alternative two is um incorporating the the one commercial. Area into the high density.
Yes, in this case, I I would say that alternative two is the most restrictive. Uh because it doesn't allow for commercial on that that hard corner of Topaz and Palmdale. Where it's most likely to develop, uh that's where we see most commercials, that it is that uh major intersections which are signalized. So uh from my opinion, I I would say if you're gonna pick an alternative that uh you don't have any issues with, it would be alternative one. Uh which allows that flexibility to to adapt to the market demands, which would be the mixed use two.
And uh so on the north side of Palmdale, um that's the county area behind the commercial?
That is correct, yes.
And do do, does the city, and I've heard this rumored for years, but. Does the city have plans to annex that area ever? To incorporate it into the city, cause it uh some of these county areas are, you know. I don't know whether even county, they're.
Yeah.
Our city.
This the city currently does not have plans to annex uh those, we call them county islands because the city's built around them. Uh but it is something as the city maybe annexes further to the the west. Or the north, um the local agency formation commission that the county may. Want the city to to take on the responsibility of those county islands, uh because it's it's better served. Uh, because it's, it's better served by, by our services, uh, because we have, you know, fire stations, police stations that are, that are more, uh, able to, to provide services there.
Okay.
Yeah, that's.
And, and I apologize, that's probably not in the scope of what we're actually looking at, or, uh, that was, I don't want to veer off.
Yeah, it is associated with the land uses though, and we're not planning to change any land use designations within the county spheres or the county islands, uh,
Okay.
which you referenced to the north. That would actually occur when we're, most likely when we plan to annex those areas. And to be honest, we may not even look at trying to change the land use, uh, in these areas because they are already are subdivided at a low-density residential. So it may be that they just stay that, that density since they're mostly built out.
Okay.
Scott, if, if I may, I wanted to add a couple of comments to address Commissioner Thomas's concern.
Sure.
And, and I had a few thoughts, um, mo- most of which you addressed, uh, but I just wanted to add a couple more. Uh, one is that the, the city does have an existing requirement to provide buffer, uh, area between um, multi-story residential and, and single-family residential. Um, and so we're not proposing to change that at this time. Um, and then another consideration is that the colors are sort of a uniform, but that doesn't mean that the actual development has to be uniform. So it could be clustered towards one portion of the site. And these are, um, I think as was alluded to earlier, we're at a high scale here. So these are pretty large sites. Uh, and so that, that residential density could be clustered towards one part of the site with parking or, uh, some lower density or lower intensity, um, features closer to the single family or the school.
Is, uh, it, I, I don't see it on here, so it must be farther west, but, uh, isn't that Southern California Edison Switching Station near there? So there'd be a lot of utility lines, or is that, is that on the perimeter right there on the west?
Yes, that's on, along the perimeter there. So, yeah, we do have that, uh, I believe it's the Victor Substation that's just outside of the, these maps on the, the west side. But, but none of these parcels have actually highlighted the, the utility corridor, but in the parcel.
Okay. I think we can move on.
Shall we move on?
Yes.
Great. Thank you. Opportunity area four, um, this is along, uh, this is, this is the fifteen, and this is the area here that, um, Dima had referred to before as a potential site for the future St. Mary's Hospital campus. And, uh, you're, you've got residential here that currently is twenty dwelling units to the acre. And, um, up here is, this is moving up toward, um, Air Valley Road. So what we're proposing here is a combination of things. We're suggesting that, that health and wellness overlay that we'd mentioned before, go over this entire property. It's the, it's the, um, the St. Mary's potential campus, and then extending it even farther south and north. We could see this really being, um, a, a great opportunity to have a, a, a really nice health and wellness campus. Have a master plan development or some combination thereof. And then you'll see here, the black lines, this is an area where Dima had mentioned, we're looking for higher-density residential for the housing element sites inventory. These are also housing element sites, but these would remain the low-density. So for this, we're, uh, we're suggesting for, um, we don't have alternatives. We're suggesting that be directly behind the health and wellness overlay, this be mixed-use two. And then on the other side of, um, Mesa Street, and kind of running along the wash, this whole area, um, would be an opportunity to do mixed-use one right in here. So this whole area really is poised, uh, if, if we, if we go with this, whoops, I did it again. I clicked, uh, this whole area could, if, if this gets approved this way, really could be poised to, to, to transform into kind of a, an, an integrated health, wellness, um, mixed-use, multi, um, density type of housing area in, in the community. We don't have alternatives for this one. And again, that's not to say that there couldn't be alternatives, but this is what we're proposing for this area. And I'm just wondering if anybody from the public has any questions or comments on it? And then we'll turn it back to the commission.
I don't see any raised hands or, um, any messages in the chat.
Okay. Commissioner Russell, turn it back to you.
Yeah, uh, Scott, um, uh, the, the black area to the right on the, on the north side, that, that's where they're building some homes right now, correct?
That is correct. That's a KB Homes track. It's current construction. So I, I, I do think that this southern area of the city is, is a unique opportunity. Um, I feel that the, uh, St. Mary's campus, when it eventually develops, uh, will be an anchor for that entire area. Uh, and it makes sense to have that wellness overlay, uh, but it creates a unique opportunity as well to provide opportunities for, for redevelopment with higher density. Um, as you could see on the, on the left side there where you see the existing, uh, land uses, you can actually see what's, what's developed there now. It's primarily vacant, and then you have some scattered, uh, single-family. Um, and this is just on the, the east side of the Ora Grand Wash, uh, in, in that industrial zone. So it's, uh, the zoning really currently doesn't reflect what's, what could be developed there, uh, it, it is kind of, are you, an odd place to, to sink, uh, a small area for industrial uses. But we do think there's an opportunity with the Ora Grand Wash, uh, to provide that, you know, a large buffer uh, from the lower density. And you could have, um, you know, higher density that would support, uh, the commercial along the freeway and the medical uses, uh, within that wellness overlay.
I would also agree. That's a great, I think that's a great location for, uh, a health and wellness area or, um, the, um, to the, to the west of that, that, uh, Scott, I've been out there and there's, yeah, there's some scattered property. Those lots are pretty big and some of them are definitely blight, uh, uh, abandoned pistachio farm I know is out there and that kind of thing, um, uh, does, uh, well, that's calling for, uh, look, okay, that's calling for low-density. I'm wondering if it's in the dark pink area where I'm, where I'm referring to.
Not in here?
Yeah, I think that, that farm you were referring to is, is actually north of Mesa and that kind of gray industrial area.
Yeah.
Uh, but it is, it, it is, uh, you know, somewhat, uh, underutilized as a residential area now scattered. Uh, not the most recent construction. I, in my opinion, it's, it's prime, uh, for, for redevelopment, uh, especially with, with a, a, a large medical facility coming to the area. Uh, it, it could transform, uh, that area with, with new development to, to eliminate, uh, some of the areas that are underutilized.
We also have a couple of questions in the, the chat. Um, one question is, would the utility corridor open space be an opportunity here?
And the answer is absolutely. Um, we, we, we did not include it on here, but that was, that was our thought is we would put that, um, that new designation, that new land use designation for the utility corridor would go over, um, this area.
Okay. Um, and then there's a, there's a comment that says the mixed-use area would be great for workforce housing to support the hospital. Um, and then a question, uh, could you talk more about the wellness overlay?
Um, the wellness overlay is, uh, as I said, it would be an overlay and the idea would be for it to be implemented, um, the, the applicant or in, in this case, St. Mary's Hospital, and then any of the properties who are, that are adjacent to it that wanted to participate in that. What we'd be looking for would be, um, some kind of a master planning concept to make sure that as it develops, it develops in a way that really is, um, integrated along the lines of what we had identified for those, those potential types of, of uses and really trying to make sure that it functions as an integrated development. It's, it's possible that over the course of time, I know as, as hospitals develop, sometimes things change and, um, they, they, you know, they might need to, to make changes to those plans. But the idea ultimately is to be able to have an integrated type of development that really supports health and wellness, um, both for, um, medical facility, hospitals, um, support, um, uh, medical types of, um, you know, medical businesses, medical, um, offices. And then also the other kinds of uses that really would benefit or could benefit from being in proximity to that, that wouldn't necessarily be, um, typically what you would see in a hospital development. And so those are the things that I, that I had mentioned earlier. Potentially some, um, uh, nursing care facilities or the, uh, one of the things that's becoming very popular are the s- sort of the, the housing that's transitional so that, um, if a senior can go in and they can live independently in an apartment or a condominium, and then, um, as they age and if they need more, if they needed assisted living, they move into the assisted living portion of the community. Um, and then if they get to the point where they, they really, uh, need some nursing help and they can't live, um, even in an assisted situation, they can transition into that and, um, I've seen a lot of developments like that around the country and in Southern California. That would be a really great use for, um, this area as well. And then as the caller mentioned, workforce housing for the, the, the folks who work in that area, absolutely. You know, that, that really makes a lot of sense. And then we're really, with it being health and wellness, and then, um, in, in particular, because this, this corridor, this, um, quarter open, utility quarter open space would be going through it, we would really like to be seeing an integration of, you know, making this area very walkable, um, tying in with the mixed-use areas because mixed-use areas typically by nature are walkable and, and bikeable. So really building this area to, to become a, um, a, a really exciting develop, developed area within the community, linking up to the utility quarter. You could link through here. You could link through the health and wellness overlay itself. You could have, um, you could have restaurants both in the health and wellness overlay or in these opportunity air, I mean, in, in these mixed-use areas. We just really see this as being, uh, a, a really beneficial, like I think Scott referred to it as, as like a, a new anchor or new campus for this part of the, of the community. And this in and of itself could stimulate development. One of the things about, uh, about, um, overlays is people can apply to have, um, an overlay added to their property too. So if this took off and it seemed like this was working out really beautifully and, um, perhaps generated some interest north and south, we could see someone, uh, applying to expand the health and wellness overlay even, even farther out just to really capitalize on all of this, this, um, this mixed-use, this walkability, this health and wellness, um, active transportation types of uses going on in this area.
Now, um, and the, the, uh, participant had a couple of additional, a little more, um, specific questions. Says, St. Mary's Medical Center already has a PUD. So they're wondering how this is different. Um, are they a, a change in permitted use or policy?
I think I could try to answer that if I understand it correctly. So, yes, St. Mary's Medical Center already has a planned unit development approved by the city. Actually has a development agreement associated with it, so they, uh, have the ability to build out their plan unit, their PUD, their campus. Um, but their campus right now only allows, uh, for the uses that are in the PUD, which are commercial uses. Um, so this overlay district is, is, is an attempt to add more ancillary uses that may not be permitted in their current campus, like, uh, skilled nursing facilities. Um, other like senior housing that would, that would play off the medical uses that are adjacent to it. So it's meant to, to add additional permitted, uh, uses that focus on health and wellness.
Thank you.
And, uh, this is Commissioner Kurt. I had a question kind of, uh, along those lines. First off, just, uh, as an overview on, uh, OA dash four, I like what I'm seeing there on the proposed because obviously we have a, you know, a natural barrier with the Ora Grand Wash there. That's going to be tough to make it, you know, bridges across there and such. So it is kind of a, to me, it's kind of its own specific area. Um, getting to the, uh, the overlay zoning of the health and wellness. You know, we learned earlier on one of the slides that the projections now are, you know, upwards of two hundred thousand, uh, uh, population trend within twenty years, just in Victorville. I know other communities in the high desert are gonna probably be following suit. And I'm wondering, you know, needing, we learned during this last pandemic that our high desert, uh, from my research, had almost half the amount of hospital beds as, as compared to the, um, average of California in a whole. So real shortage. So obviously, we, we know and there's been a lot of talks, we need, you know, large trauma center, um, high-level trauma center up here, if not now, very soon. Is this health and wellness campus? Because this may be the opportune place on the freeway. Is it big? Is the overlay big enough?
It, it, it could be expanded, uh. Patricia, did you have any thoughts on maybe the drawbacks to expanding it further into the mixed-use areas?
Oops. Um, you're talking about expanding it this way. Um, this is an area that we've identified for the higher-density housing. If we expanded it in here, I'm not sure how well that would work from HCD's perspective. I could certainly see it expanding rather than doing mixed-use one up here. I could definitely see potentially expanding it into this area, um, and, and possibly even farther up here. Uh, you could, you could recommend to expand it now, or as I mentioned, in the future, if it, i- if there, if, if there was a lot of interest in maybe making this area really the, kind of the, the epicenter of, um, of, hospital, trauma center, medical facilities and things, certainly someone could apply to expand the health and wellness um, overlay too. Just because it's not on a land use map now doesn't mean that someone could overlay too. Just because it's not on a land use map now doesn't mean that someone could not apply to expand it. Or the city could initiate an expansion at a later date as well. So if, if you, if you like the idea and you'd like to see us expand it, we could certainly do that now. Or there's always the opportunity to do it in the future, whether it's city initiated or landowner developer initiated.
And if I can answer that from the perspective of the housing element, we do have some, quite a bit of buffer built in to our site inventory. And so if it's the commission's preference to see this health overlay, health and wellness overlay expanded, we can take out those housing sites and, and focus on the existing sites identified elsewhere in the city.
Thank you, Damon.
Yeah, sure. So, so there's a little bit of trade-off, but we're happy to take direction from the commission on, on its preference for, with regard to that trade-off.
I wasn't really at the point to give direction on expansion of it, and those are good points you just made. Thank you. My only question was, is that site, you know, I'm wondering if that site's big enough, you know, to handle a, a really major trauma center and all the ancillary uses that go along with it, because we all know that once you put, you know, a specific type of health and wellness overlay somewhere, that, that usually gives some benefits and some direction for future users to say, hey, here's your spot, you know? And so would it be, you know, would it be big enough or is there, I'm just wondering if there's plenty of land there. Yes, you know, we know St. Mary's is working on it, but they may go large, someone else may go large on it. Seems like the opportune spot, you know, I just want to make sure that if we're going to give the benefit of an overlay, that it's appropriate. And I'm not, I don't know if it should be more or less actually.
We can do some more research on that and follow up since it sounds like the, the idea of the health and wellness overlay, and especially in this area is a, is a positive one, that might be something that we could, we could look at. Maybe even, maybe even touching basis with St. Mary's.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Claudia, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. Yeah, there, there is another question. Question is, if it is an overlay, why can't the underlying use remain mixed use one?
It could. It's just that mixed use one is the thing about mixed use, well, yeah, I shouldn't, I shouldn't have just said it could, because mixed use one is much less intense than what we would expect to see in the health and wellness overlay. And mixed use itself doesn't allow those, it, it's, we're kind of looking at two different things. Mixed use one is lower intensity and lower density. So I would think that if you were really looking to expand the health and wellness overlay to give it as much opportunity as possible, you would, you might want to just change that land use designation to general commercial and expand it. But that's something that we'd have to look at. Again, that's part of the implementation.
I have another question. Aren't there some high transmission lines that are crossing the freeway right there, Scott? There was an issue actually with that and the St. Mary's Medical. If, I don't see that on the map, the transmission lines, and shouldn't there be a corridor for those?
Yes, and just try to, we're, we're just trying to simplify these graphics to not, you know, confuse the audience. But our approach with this land use update is to take all of the utility corridors within the city and designate them as open space, because that's what they can be used for, is just to open space purposes such as trails. So yeah, there is one that runs right through, it's kind of hard to see, but yeah, where the cursor is there. Yeah, there's a, there's an edis of use that runs through there. So when the finalized land use plan is, or reviewed by the commission, it's going to include an open space strip that runs.
Okay. Well, that also would be a great place for all that to also be recreational on there. That's such an ideal area right there, that whole, that whole area.
That really is.
Yeah, and we, we did think that we couldn't do this land use update without addressing this area because of the existing zoning. It just doesn't seem to relate to the current market trends or, or what future development will likely occur in the area such as that new hospital.
Okay, I don't see any other, any raised hands or any additional comments in the chat.
So it sounds like there's a lot of support for health and wellness overlay. Sorry, what was that, Claudia?
Um, no, I was just saying there, there aren't any additional comments.
Okay, there aren't any. Okay, great.
There are not, right.
So we can go back and look at this a little bit more based upon the, the input that we've received. As I mentioned, it sounds like the health and wellness is, is really positive. We can maybe do a little bit more research and see if perhaps it should be expanded. And maybe looking at tweaking some of the other designations a little bit. I, I, I feel like we've got some, some good direction on, on the kinds of things that you would like to see and the benefits of this area to the future of the city. So why don't we move on? Because we've got several more opportunity areas to go through.
And we actually got one more kind of thumbs up to, from somebody who likes the, the health and wellness overlay as well.
Okay, great.
Yeah.
Thank you. Okay, OA-5 is, this is freeway and Bear Valley Road. And this is Dunia Plaza, and I think you've got a Walmart here and a Kohl's. The, the mall of Victor Valley is up here. And then, so this area back here, as you can see over on the existing, there, there's a, a few buildings here, but for the most part, it's fairly, it's mostly vacant. And this was an area that was identified on the, for, for housing sites for a little bit higher density. Or Damon, was this a mixed, was this a mixed income? I forget. We were looking for around 30 dwelling units per acre for this area. So we're proposing, we didn't do any, we didn't do options on this one, because we thought that since it's already commercial and it's near one of your most intensely developed commercial areas, that if we, if we had mixed use two, that would provide opportunities to expand the commercial if the market demanded it. You could certainly have the opportunity to do that, or it could be residential, or this would be certainly a large enough site that you could really do some, a really nice mixed use integrated development, if, if that was something that the market demanded as well. So this is our proposal for this particular area. So do we have any comments or questions from the public? Oh, I'm sorry, commissioners?
Yeah, I have a comment. I, I'm, I don't like that. The southeast corner of Amethyst and Bear Valley Road, that, that needs to stay commercial right there. That's, that's just too much of a prime location. I just don't think that that's a good, yeah, right there. And then, yes, and then if you, there, there's already a car wash. And I'm sure it's not long before somebody's going to propose, the, the lot is already for sale for commercial. And if you continue south on Amethyst, there is actually a medical building, I believe, keep going right there. And then, yeah, and then there's a church down towards the end. I think that, maybe that area there is, you know, I like that there, but that, that top left corner, I think that should stay commercial.
Okay.
I'm just giving, I'm just giving my input. I'm just giving my input, what, what, you know.
Yeah, thank you.
I don't see the car wash and the way, the way I have understood it, the, the person that owns that and just built that car wash owns the property behind it and already has plans to do other commercial stuff back. Is that, is that true, Scott?
Uh, yes, we have not seen anything probably within the last two years. But there was a concept plan that they showed to, you know, build out the remainder of the site. But I, at this point, I don't think the market demanded that. And that's, that's why this, this mixed use two that's proposed gives that flexibility. I agree with you that that hard corner at Bear Valley Road could, most likely will develop, I'm sorry, Bear Valley and Amethyst roads. Most likely it'll develop commercial. The hard thing to determine is where, where that hard line is, where it would transition from commercial to more of a mixed use or a, or a multifamily use. So what's proposed here is still allows for commercial. This, this entire area could develop commercial. But it also provides the flexibility to, to allow for, for higher density, multifamily, which we have had a couple of preliminary reviews from developers that want to build in the sites that are not fronting Bear Valley Road. But if, if there's a preference to, to ensure that we, we preserve commercial along Bear Valley Road, we can definitely incorporate that. Do you think that Commissioner Harriman, do you think that the depth of commercial is adequate there? You could see kind of where that existing shops at Bear Valley is on the, on the Amethyst, just west of Amethyst. Do you think that, that depth is adequate for commercial?
The existing depth of the ones on the north side?
Yeah, so I'm talking about the south side. So if you were to extend that commercial line onto the, to the pink, is that, is, is that, you know, adequate?
What, I apologize. Remind me what the black outline is for those.
Yes, those are potential sites for our housing element to meet our arena numbers for.
Yeah, I'm seeing that corner that I'm referring to. The southeast corner, I see that coming down deeper than that black line. Because if you look to the west of that, on the, on the southwest corner, that, that's not very deep. I think there's a, a Walgreens there on the corner. That, yeah, that, that's not actually that deep. I think, I think that, that other corner is gonna probably want to expand deeper than that.
Are you comfortable with the concept of having it a mixed use so the developer can, can as market, as the market demands, kind of set that line of how far the commercial would go south?
I, I just think that the commercial part of that will come more south. But I think that's an ideal area behind that commercial corridor on Bear Valley Road to, to become mixed use. And some of those examples that they showed us earlier in the presentation, I think would go good back there also. You also have the Oro Grand Wash that, that runs right there. And I believe, didn't, didn't, there's some new retention infrastructure that just got done on that wash in the last couple of years?
Yes, that's in the, that low density residential zone there on the east side of Amethyst.
Okay.
There, yeah. There's a regional detention base. But yeah, you're right, it still has that Oro Grand Wash that bisects it.
I think, Scott, if I can jump in here, one other detail for the commission's consideration, and, and this gets into the weeds a little bit. But some of these sites are very large, so we're talking 15, 20, in one case even close to 40 acres. And so part of the, what, what the state guidelines are for these, the housing sites is that if they're designated for lower income or, or mixed income housing, they have to be subdivided into smaller parcels. And so one of the programs in the housing element will be to subdivide some of these parcels. And so that's where there are options for the commission, if you want to restrict those portions of the parcels that are closer to Bear Valley Road to commercial only, and then allow mixed use behind those, that, that would be an option. Or, or, you know, there's different varieties of that, different modifications we can make to that.
I might have been a little, I, I don't want to be vague, but I, I also, I, I believe that whole area would be a great place to have housing on top of commercial is behind maybe something much larger right there on the, on the absolute corner. I wish I could, you guys could see my cursor.
So, so I, from what I'm hearing from you is that you're, you're receptive to the idea of mixed use and that you could see it actually have, have vertical mixed use where you'd actually have commercial along Bear Valley Road, but maybe even apartments or condos or something above it.
I just think that's a great area to have a street maybe serpentine through the back of the, that, of the area that will stay commercial in front of Bear Valley Road, that, that, you know, that, I'm just, I'm just visioning something like that.
Yeah, that, that's a good point, that we do have that intersection at Coima that's signalized and that it would be nice to coordinate a larger connection as it sort of teams through the site to the west. We, we can look at that further.
I'm sure there's going to be some bridge work there in the, in the future. Bear Valley Road shrinks way down when it crosses the wash, and I just, I don't see that. I mean, even the new car wash is inset quite a bit more, so I, I'm. Anyways, that's, that's what I was thinking.
I'm, this is Rob. I'm looking at that, that area and I'm familiar with it. And we know that, you know, the, the current area that's proposed to be the MU2 is, I think that's about 160 acres. That is a lot of commercial. That's probably more than the whole mall of Victor Valley, maybe then some total. I am in agreement that commercial, we'll, we'll probably see commercial along Bear Valley and maybe even along Amethyst, some more commercial. But, you know, once again, in my opinion, if it's true that, you know, all or any of this can be commercial, and we're now giving the opportunity that if it's too much commercial, we can do some, we can do some housing there. We need to do some higher density housing. And, you know, I'm, I'm with you, Commissioner Harriman, if, if some of it ended up being true mixed use with, with housing and, you know, commercial embedded throughout, you know, that, that would be the ultimate. But I think, once again, by putting the MU2, the mixed use, you still have commercial. If you need to put your gas station on the corner, or if you have a big box that wants to come in, correct me if I'm wrong, Scott, but that, that could still happen, right? The, the box could come in, the gas station could come on the corner. But in the meantime, with all that excess land, that's probably not going to be commercial. We're probably not going to see a Victoria Gardens there. Then that could be used, those property owners could use it to build housing. Is that correct?
Yes, there is, there is something that we, we plan to develop related to big box retail, more regional retail. Typically mixed use designations are conducive to large automotive serving, big box like. uh, serving, uh, big box like a superstore that's around a hundred thousand square feet. So we've seen mixed use, uh, held to like a, uh, maximum maybe of like fifty thousand square feet, feet. So, yes, it would allow, you know, your, your normal grocery store, um, but it may not be an appropriate location for like a Sam's Club or an, a- another Costco. So if, if there's some thought that that's a location for a big box store, then we maybe should, uh, something that's in excess of fifty thousand, then we should probably locate, uh, preserving some commercial for that instead of the M two designation.
Hmm, I'm not sure if the, uh, big box would, would go there. I am sure that some commercial will go along Bear Valley. You know, looking at across the street, the Stater Brothers site, that's ten acres, that's pretty big, that's a lot of retail. You know, add that up along Bear Valley Road, that's a heck of a lot of retail. I, I'm still thinking I like the flexibility and I don't think a big box will be there because it's not really on the, on the freeway. So I, I like the flexibility and I just want to make sure that, like Commissioner Harriman said, com- uh, commercial can come along Amethyst, it can come along Bear Valley. Um, and we just don't know because we're, we're, you know, we're talking ten years out or more at this point.
Yes, yeah, everything you said is correct, it would allow for a commercial to come in. Um, and would allow for multifamily if that's what the market, uh, demanded.
I, I, um, like the big, I'm sorry, I like the, uh, multiple use designation also because, uh, with additional housing and especially, uh, uh, multiple dwelling housing, the commercial, that will support the commercial and, and I think that, uh, think that that's, that's a good use, I think that's, I think we want to ride track with that. As far as, uh, the c- commercial designation on that corner at Bear Valley and Amethyst, uh, the southeast corner, I, I tend to agree because there's a lot of traffic passing that area and, uh, I think it's ideal for, you know, I don't know if they would put a service station, what, whatever developer would want to put there, but it would, it's a good location, it should be preserved, I just don't know. Uh, I don't have any idea what the po- proportion should be there. But, uh, I agree, there should be something designated there as commercial or reserved as, uh, commercial.
One, uh, one item that we didn't put in the proposal, but it's been done by other communities is that you can designate areas of a mixed use area that require it to be commercial. So it requires a portion of it to be commercial. Um, but it still allows the actual residential as well, so you could, you could have the commercial on the bottom story and still have, uh, residential. Uh, but if, it, it seems like the arching thought here is that we need to preserve, uh, ensure that we have some commercial at Bear Valley and Amethyst. And we can explore having, uh, uh, an overlay within the mixed use district that, that dictates that that, you know, properties on, uh, major intersections that are signalized have a component of commercial. Uh, so if that's, if that's something the commission's receptive to, we can easily, uh, develop that in, in the mixed use zoning standards and, uh, ensure that we at least get some type of commercial, uh, where it's viable at, at those hu- hard, uh, corners that are signalized. Is that something the commission would be receptive to? That, it seems like you're receptive to the mixed use designation because it allows flexibility. But we also are concerned about the commercial and making sure that we, we have some commercial, uh, built into the project.
Yeah, I agree with that.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Yes, yes, because that's definitely one of Victorville's main and main commercial intersections.
Yeah.
Okay, so yeah, we can explore that further and that's, uh, we'll, we'll, we'll look at that and find a way to make it clear, uh, related to maybe a master planned street designation where it intersects. Uh, you need to, if you develop on that site within a mixed use area, you need to propose some commercial along with, with residential if that's what you plan to, uh, build.
Uh, uh, an- another thing, uh, the, um, the, uh, northeast corner of Shooting Star and Bear Valley is red is, is on there as commercial, right there. I think, I think, uh, I think that location would be, uh, good high density location. As it's abutted by homes around it.
Okay, I see, uh. So you're just thinking between Shooting Star and Pacoima and leave that commercial area?
Yeah, yes.
Since we have an M two designation possibly to the south with, and, you know, it may come in as a commercial use as well. Would you be open to having that as M two designation to match the south side of the street?
Actually, yeah, I, the, and, uh, uh, actually, I'm not sure, but I, but I, MU one or two?
Yeah, and MU two could, could, I mean, sorry, MU one may be more appropriate since it's directly abutting, uh, commercial, I'm sorry, directly abutting, uh, single family.
Yeah, and then that, that, uh, the, uh, west side of Pacoima is already developed commercial. So it would just, it would, it would, it be encompassed by Shooting Star, Pacoima and Bear Valley. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
I, I have a question. On the, uh, street connections from the, uh, back of this development over into the Walmart, W- Walmart area or different, are they go- going to add new streets in there? I mean, I guess the ingress, uh, to these properties would be, I guess, off of Bear Valley and Amethyst, but would there be other ways in and out?
Um, no, right now there's not a circulation at Master Plan Street that would connect this mixed use area to the, uh, Dunia Plaza besides Bear Valley Road. Uh, however, uh, if we do move forward with this mixed use designation and there is a remaining development there that's right next to the Walmart, just north of Walmart, we, we could pursue, uh, discussions with them for some type of pedestrian linkage to the, to that, uh, development, so people, you know, if, if we did have some multifamily that are directly behind the Walmart, uh, they'd have like a, uh, another means to access the shopping center through a walking trail. There is a Caltrans dike that separates that, this, this proposed MU two designation and the actual Dunia Plaza. So there would, there would have to be some type of crossing to that.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say, it would need a bridge.
But yeah, I, I, I could see somebody that lived in that area and would want to walk to Restaurant Row. You know, so providing a connection there would make sense, especially if the commission's receptive to having it, uh, and having residential there right behind Dunia Plaza.
Um, yeah, it's some, uh, pedestrian bridges would be, would be great there. I, I know down in Carlsbad and Solano Beach, they've got pedestrian bridges over the railroad tracks there. Uh, going south to the San Diego area, that, I, I could see that.
Okay. All right, I know we have about, uh, ten more slides and I think we have a, at least a few more of these, uh, opportunity areas, but, if there's not any more questions or concern, I think Patricia can move on to the next one.
This is, uh, this opportunity area, OA six is focusing on the Seventh Street Corridor. Um, and as you can see along here on the left slide, it's mostly commercial. And then you see this light pinkish peachy color here, few of these scattered here and there. That is the office, um, um, office professional. So our proposal, oh, let's see, over here too, um, I just noticed that. In this area, there is a, uh, a small light industrial property that's sort of tucked in in all of this commercial. And then, uh, this is a, uh, public institutional. So what we are proposing is to do mixed use two, use the mixed use two along the Seventh Street Corridor as well, along all the frontage, extend it back to La Paz. And then over, uh, or you go farther down La Paz, turn this light industrial into commercial, so the commercial wraps all the way around. And then the areas that are currently OP, office professional, because they're right up a- adjacent to single family residential, we're suggesting that, we're proposing that, um, these be MU one. And that's, uh, again, much less intense commercial development and, um, lower density residential. So you can see these little sites scattered here, MU one, MU one, here and here. And then the rest of it wrapping around, um, would be MU two. And I, um, Scott, is thi- this is some Old Town, the, the purple, is that where the Old Town specific plan starts? Yeah.
Correct.
We thought that would be a really nice transition into the Old Town specific plan. Uh, and again, the idea here is really to provide some flexibility to encourage infill and, um, possibly, um, a little bit of, uh, revitalization in this area. Any comments on this one? Comments or questions on this?
Is that area that's light industrial on the left screen and changed to commercial on the right? It, isn't that where the, we, um, approved that car dealership? Avis, I think it was?
Uh, actually, Avis is within the red area just south of that, um, designation. So, uh, currently that site is used as like a service yard for frontier communications.
Oh, okay, that's right.
But it does have, uh, you know, prime freeway frontage. And, uh, so the, the site can continue as a, as a service yard, but upon redevelopment, we, we want it to be more consistent with the adjacent, uh, land uses. And then just to add some additional, um, reasoning for this MU designation on Seventh Street, uh, we've, we've seen this strip corridor commercial, um, kind of pass its heyday. Uh, this used to be the downtown of the entire Victor Valley. Uh, but as other communities built their own commercial, um, and as Victorville built more commercial, uh, further south, uh, we've seen a decline in, in, uh, occupancy of the commercial areas in this, in this strip. Uh, so the idea is, is to create, uh, some more rooftops, uh, potential redevelopment of sites, uh, which would in turn support, uh, the commercial that's there. So this is a way through density to, to potentially add more units which will help the commercial corridor, uh, itself.
Are they calling the fairgrounds public institutional?
Yes, we haven't touched that, uh, but it is, it is zoned for public institution right now.
Um, this is, uh, Commissioner Kurth, I think these, uh, site maps make sense to me.
A- and it's not something, uh, density wise, uh, that's, um, out of, out of place for the area since Patricia mentioned we have the specific plan to the north that allows similar densities and the, uh, the civic center specific plan, which also allows that thirty units per acre.
Yes, I, I like that too, that, that commercial area along Seventh Street has been empty for thirty years. So going to MU two. MU two makes a lot of sense to me. Is this other, uh, public and does, is that the, the library?
Um, yes, you see the library there, that's just, uh, uh, yeah, right there, yeah, yeah. And so that has that, uh, shopping center that, that's mainly just concrete pads right now that's surrounded. So that's an opportune site for redevelopment, uh, with, you know, maybe commercial on the bottom story with, with, uh, multifamily above it. So this, this change in the general plan would allow, allow for that to develop. Well, hopefully encourage, uh, developers to look at this site.
I pray, I, I pray for that.
And the Seventh Street Corridor is also within an opportunity zone. Uh, so with, you know, tax credits, uh, developers can, uh, I shouldn't say tax credits, but some tax benefits, uh, for developers to, to build in this area with the increased density. We, we hope to, uh, see some projects start popping up throughout this area. All right, if there's no other questions, uh, or concerns, Patricia, keep going.
Uh, let's see, uh, we are, um, on Bear Valley Road here, Opportunity Area seven, along Bear Valley Road. And then this is the Victor Valley Community College behind it. And you can see here, you've got commercial along the frontage and then this great big piece of office professional behind it. That's, it's got a, uh, some development, but for the most part is, um, mostly bacon. So because it's right next to, uh, uh, Victor Valley Community College, we, we thought we would preserve the commercial along here, but then put in mixed use one behind it. That would provide, uh, a, a nice transition between the commercial and the lower density residential and, um, provide some housing and some other types of services that could be supportive both for the area and for students of the Victor Valley Community College. Any, any thoughts or, uh, comments on this one?
I think that's an excellent idea too. I just, I don't see the fire station.
The fire station is actually in that kind of mustard brown color, uh,
Okay.
It, it's, uh, at the south, southwest corner of Horta and Tamer, Tamar City.
Right there.
So again, we, we had some multifamily, uh, where you could see that multifamily designation there, uh, that the city has, but it was, it, it really hasn't built out as, as multifamily. You'll, you see, uh, a, a middle school that was built there and then you had a fire station. Uh, so like Patricia said, uh, we do see it viable for student housing in that area. Uh, more of a walkable community that ties in with the community college.
Yeah, I like. Yeah, I like that.
Any other comments or should I move on?
I think you can move on.
And this is a little farther west on Bear Valley Road, Desert Valley Hospital. And you've got some office professional up here. And then this is just all commercial. So under the proposed, you can see these are all housing element sites. Some of these, I believe are, there's some pipeline projects, and so this would be consistent with that. And we've got a proposal to change these areas to mixed use two. Again, that would allow the standalone up to thirty dwelling units per acre or standalone commercial or some combination thereof. And then with the Desert Valley Hospital, we thought about putting a health and wellness overlay over the, the Desert Valley Hospital. And currently we're proposing that this could be mixed use two behind it. Certainly another op, option, this is that office professional that we're proposing that, that go away. Another option, even though it's not on here, I want to mention, we could always extend the health and wellness overlay all the way up to Jasmine Street. So this entire block could be health and wellness. Any, any questions on this one or comments?
Yeah, I like, I like expanding the health and wellness there to Jasmine. Scott, wasn't that, that commercial lot there on the northwest corner of Bear Valley and Second, wasn't that, wasn't that gonna get built out? Didn't somebody start putting some infrastructure in there?
Yes, so yeah, there, there is some partial street improvements, bad pads that have been leveled. And as you could, as you could see the pattern of the parcels there, it was planned at one point to be like an office campus, but just never came to fruition. We are actually working with a developer that wants to bring forward a, a proposal to, to do a mixed use development on, on that entire property between Second and Third. So this change to the, this change to the general plan would, would be in line with what the developer would be requesting.
Anything else on this one? Buddy, anyone from the community?
Nope, no, I'll, I'll let you know if there are.
Okay. All right, thanks. Should we move on to O nine?
Yeah, yes.
Yes.
Okay. This is, we're, we're here at the, at the freeway, Niskali Road, and then Mariposa wrapping along here. And you can see we've got a large office professional vacant piece of property right here. And so if you look over at alternative one, you'll see some higher density residential sites from, well, actually, we'd be coming toward, this would be more of a medium, up to the twenty dwelling units per acre for this one. So this wouldn't be the highest density, this would be more for moderate, moderate income, moderate density. So we put these two together and we're proposing for alternative one, that this entire area over here go to mixed use one. As kind of a transition between the more intensive commercial over here and your existing single family residential over here. So mixed use one here, and then this would be the new medium density residential from, that would be twelve to twenty dwelling units per acre. And keeping the commercial along the, the Niskali frontage. That's alternative one. Alternative two would be keeping the residential as proposed, but rather than expanding this whole area to mixed use one, we would just recommend that the office, office professional be re-designated to commercial. If, if you're interested in keeping this, really designating this area as commercial and not wanting to encourage or, or provide opportunities for additional housing in here. So alternative one, this whole area goes to mixed use one. And then alternative two, just the office professional changes to a commercial designation.
Okay, I have a comment on that. The, the new last mile Amazon facility in the old Walmart is, is the alternative to commercial, the, is that the old drive-in theater area that actually would be right up against the, the new la, last mile facility?
No, there's at least a five acre parcel between that, that office professional district or in, on alternative two or it's the bright red commercial. There is more commercial to the south of that before you get to the Amazon facility. Is that what you were asking, if it had butted the facility?
Yeah, I was, I, I was just thinking now that that big logistics facility is there, it would be maybe, I know that's a big homeless heaven back there, but some of that land would be good to keep it in line with the new logistics facility.
That, that was a thought, and that's, I think, more in line with this alternative two. Because if we, we did designate this commercial, we, that allows it to have that commercial manufacturing zoning, which would allow for those type of more light industrial uses, but also commercial uses. So this may be a site that's more prone for commercial development right now. But since we were, you know, talking a lot about the mixed use and other sites, we, we thought that it would be appropriate to maybe ask the commission if they thought this area would be conducive to multifamily mixed use.
I like alternative two.
Okay.
I like alternative two as well. I think the fact that, of course, it has that freeway frontage of proximity adds to its value as commercial.
I personally like alternative two as well.
And I'm in agreement, I'm in agreement as well. But I had one question that just came up now that we're seeing an MU one. We've seen a lot of MU two being proposed on these, on these site areas. This MU one is, is, you know, fronting on balsam and there's single family homes adjacent to that. And then we've seen some other areas, I think, where it was MU two adjacent to single family homes. What is the, what's the school of thought between MU two and MU one when it, when it abuts these homes like this?
Well, the thought process was to, to try to respect the, the lower density and transition to an M one first. However, if it was located in one case, like next to a medical facility, we thought that maybe a higher density for like senior housing would, would, would be more conducive. Again, the, the thirty, max thirty units per acre isn't, isn't what all developers will request. That's just the maximum. So you could have developers come in that, that build something more in the low twenties units per acre, which is more in line with the M one zone. Yeah, we, we could, we could look at that further if, if you were concerned about the M two designation being close to some of those residents and some, some of these past alternatives. Was that a concern?
I, I'm not really sure because I can't remember exactly all of the, all of the slides. But I do remember the heaviest of residential zoning being next to a school. I remember it being next to commercial, but I also remember it being next to some single family homes, I think. And I'm, I'm okay with that, but I didn't know if we should be keeping our mind aware of, hey, this should be M one or this should be M two because of, you know, housing nearby or something.
Yeah. So yeah, the, the only M two that I'm aware of that would have but existing single family would be next to Desert Valley Hospital. There is some designation early on that we, at the three ninety-five at Palmdale, where we were looking at high density residential or mixed use two. That is adjacent to single family residential, but it's currently vacant, single family. So there's additional opportunities there to, to provide buffers between those two uses. But yeah, there's not, there's not a defined school of thought that, that went into that. It was mainly based off of high traffic corridors, trying to meet arena numbers. And, you know, based on the circulation that was in the area, it could accommodate that density.
Okay, thank you.
Scott, there is some, just for clarification, there is some proposed MU two next to developed single family in the west of Dunia Plaza area.
That is, that is true. If you guys want to flip back, flip back to that.
OA five.
Okay, but that's, that's a, that's a commercial designation currently. So yeah, there's, you know, similar impacts with more, more of a higher, higher density use or traffic concerns with, with commercial and with, with a residential development. But yeah, I, I like to hear the commission's thoughts is, should, should we, as we finalize this, should we be more respective, respectful of, of a, of a more gradual transition from low density to the MU two? So it should maybe go in a graduated low density MU one, then MU two?
Like that idea, too. Like that as well.
Okay.
Yeah, and I don't know if there's any situations moving forward or any other parts of the city that, that would have any MU one or MU two that was, you know, existing single family. I don't know if we're doing that, if we're just coming over, you know, other zonings that are, that are more intensive like commercial. But I would just, I don't really know the difference of impacts on fifteen dwelling units versus twenty, versus twenty-five. But it's just a thought to keep in mind when we're, we're coming up against single family homes is all.
Yeah. I, I like the thought process and I think I can work with the consultant team to, to address that.
Yes. We can, we can include some policies for buffers if there are certain areas where it, for, for an overwhelming reason, it makes sense to keep MU two, where there might be some single family residential, we can make sure that we have policies in there to ensure that there are buffers to respect the, to mitigate any impacts. So OA nine, go ahead.
I'm sorry, I, I have one more question. Scott, I, I noticed that old mobile home park is red. Has that been rezoned for a while? We're just waiting for that place to disappear? It's, the new hotel is gonna be right there next to it.
Uh, yeah, it, it's, uh, it could stay as a mobile home park for some years, but I, it's my understanding that that mobile home park and the property to the south of it are all owned by one developer. So yeah, we haven't seen a proposal for the entire site, but we expect as this area builds out that there could be some redevelopment of that site, but it would, it would be developer driven. The, the city's not in a point to relocate that mobile home park.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Should I move on?
Yeah, just to recap, it sounds like alternative two is preferred.
Yes. So now we wanted to talk a little bit about that low density residential infill overlay. This is the area that we've preliminarily identified as being most appropriate for that residential infill. It's more, more, more of a core area of the city. And as, as we look at, you know, zooming in on some of these properties, there's a lot of development that's already occurred, a lot of single family residential and some multifamily residential. But there are pockets that have not developed, some are large and some are smaller. And so because it's already developed, because the infrastructure for the most part is already in place, we just identified this as being that area for that low density residential infill. We don't want to encourage spreading the, the, the residential density out into these areas at the, at that higher density. So just a reminder, this, instead of being zero to five dwelling units per acre, this would be zero to seven dwelling units per acre. So that could allow something like a small, smaller lot, multi, single family residential. It could allow things like courtyard housing and townhouses, well, not, probably not townhouses, but courtyard housing, things like that. So zooming in, in, this is a portion of the area. We just wanted to highlight what, where some of those are that I was mentioning. Where you can see my cursor, unfortunately, this gray doesn't pop up, pop very much. But where my cursor is here, you see the LDR infill, you see a lot of these labels down here. These are just some areas that we, that we've identified as being vacant and where development is kind of, if you've heard the expression leapfrog over it. And so this, we're, we're hoping that this might be an incentive for people to, to fill in so that we can take advantage of the infrastructure that's already there before expanding out into portions of the city that maybe may not have the infrastructure. And it's not just the infrastructure, it's also the services, police and fire and other city services. This is an area up here where we're proposing a, a larger, lower density infill overlay as well. And let me see, and this builds on this, the, this is the last opportunity area. This is opportunity area ten, the existing here, this is the, let me see. That is, this is the Victor Valley Medical Center up here in this area. And it's, but it's office professional. And so we're proposing that it be changed to a, I think Scott, you said a mixed use. Now I'm wondering why we have this hot pink. Because we were gonna change it, yeah, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, it should have been this.
Doing office profession, yeah.
Yeah.
So this would be, go ahead.
Yeah, so here's, yeah, M two designation, which corresponds with the density within the specific plan, the adjacent specific plan.
Thank you, thank you. I had a little brain fade there with the health and wellness overlay over it. Thank you, thank you. I had a little brain fade there with the health and wellness overlay over it. Um, because it's already got the medical center, there's a, um, pediatric clinic. There's a pre-operation center, uh, there's a foot and ankle clinic, so there's already a lot of that going on there. And then the mixed use two would be more supportive of other types of uses that could be allowed and then. This is the old town specific plan area, so it will be supportive of that. And then this is, um, a better view of that really, uh, fairly large area. Where we could see an opportunity for, um, the low density infill.
So, um. Patricia, if you could go back to the slide that showed where that, uh, boundary for the low density infill overlay is. I, I just want to explain to the commission, the thought process and, and creating this overlay. We've heard from developers, uh, that would like to build in the city, would like to build. You know, more, uh, that missing middle housing that we talked about, uh, that's. That's more entry level than our, our normal seventy-two hundred square foot lots. And realizing that it's not appropriate to. Um, make a blanket rezoning for all of our, our one district since we want to preserve those lot sizes. We wanted to find a way to encourage development within the core area of the city that's been skipped over. And this is why we, we designated this, this area for a. A, I want to call it a by right way for developers to build. Uh, higher density ownership property and, uh, Patricia named him off like a. Maybe even a townhouse, but, but more of a, you know, small lot subdivisions, uh, clustered housing. And so this isn't a, a new concept because we have this type of housing. Um, in our specific plans and what we're trying to do is, is. Have the developer avoid the whole process of going through a specific plan. But be able to follow standards that the city has for these, for these, uh. Uh, overlay sites. And so this will help streamline development for the development community. Uh, to build higher density in these areas that have been skipped over. So instead of building it, you know, developing a new specific plan and, and the risk of going through all of the discretionary approvals through the city. The developer would be able to rely on standards that the city puts in place for these overlay districts. And can submit a, a tentative map and the city would review it. And the planning commission would be able to review it, make sure it has proper amenities. So it would be similar to a specific plan and still have the necessary amenities, open space, whatever it may be. Um, uh, but it would be more streamlined for the developers and. This is something that the development community is, is asked for and this is kind of a way for us to. Accommodate that and also, uh, make it, uh, in areas that are more sustainable. Uh, because they're, they're within the core of the city where, where a lot of the utilities are already provided. Um, and they're closer to services. So any, any questions from the public or the, the commission on, on this concept?
Uh, could you go to the next slide? I think it showed a little bit more of which, uh, the gray, is it the gray coloring?
Yeah. Yeah. Those are sites that have not developed yet, uh, for whatever reason, um, and. Uh, this overlay would allow them to, uh. Uh, go through a permitting process that's more streamlined to get, uh. Smaller lots.
And those look like actually pretty, pretty small sites. And, and do you think that's because like typically the seventy-two hundred square foot lots, by the time you have a small site and you're in, gonna only end up with. Four or less ho- houses per acre, it doesn't make sense to do that sometimes. So this is like a little bit of a density bonus, maybe?
Yes, it's definitely a density bo- that bonus for developers to develop these sites that have been, that have been skipped over. But again, there's, there'll be trade-offs there. I, I'd imagine this, uh. This overlay district will have similar standards to our specific plans and PUDs. Which require, uh, you know, common amenities, common recreation, so, uh. Yeah, we don't want everyone to be on a small lot and not have access to open space. So there is some, some trade-off there that would be outlined in, in the, uh. In the overlay district standards, which would be developed, uh. But the, it would allow the developer to just follow those standards instead of having to. Go through the cost and time and, uh, uncertainty of developing their own specific plan. And proposing that and going through planning commission and city council. Uh, this overlay district would have those standards already laid out for that developer to follow.
That makes sense to me because these sites are so small versus a large, you know, PUD plan. Okay.
Yeah. And yeah, just to be clear, most of them are very small with the exception of that site that's just south of, uh. The Victor Valley Global Medical Center.
I have, I have a little bit of input on that, that particular area. I like that very low density, that, that, that's actually an ideal place. It's in the hills, so to speak, and next to the river. And the Kemper Campbell Ranch, be a great location for, for high-end homes.
And, and it, it could develop that way, uh. The, the overlay district could allow for a combination of both, uh. If it was an overlay district, it wouldn't, um, eliminate. The planning's commission's oversight on what gets developed there. Um, but it would be more streamlined through a, a tentative, uh, parse, sorry, a tentative track map.
Yeah, I did, I see it maybe as an HOA or something there.
And that's, that's, uh, similar to, uh. The PUD and specific standards we have in our municipal code that require amenities. So, um, which would dictate a, an HOA, uh, so. Uh, we actually have had a developer that's looking at making that area into a specific plan. Um, but given that we were looking at trying to, uh. Focus development or incentivize development in areas that, that have been skipped over. Uh, we, we thought, and since that's, you know, located within the core of the city, that. It, it would be prime for, uh, an infill overlay to help streamline the process for the developer. The, if there is concerns, I think that, uh, those can be ironed out. As we dig into the actual ordinance or zoning standards for the overlay district. Uh, cause I, I believe we can, uh, accomplish the quality development that the commission seeks. Uh, but possibly allow a little bit more density. So is it, is there any, uh, for the comments, is the concept of the overlay? Something that the commission's supportive of?
Yeah, I am.
I am as well.
Okay.
Yeah, I am, I am, I'm, I'm in support.
Yes.
Is there concern about that property by Kemper Campbell Ranch or do you think that's, uh, something that we can work out in the. In the actual ordinance to ensure that it's a quality development?
Yeah, I, I would like to see that insured as a quality development. We just don't have any in our city. So I just find that location, I've always liked that location because. Right there along the river, Kemper Campbell Ranch and it's kind of in the hills, so to speak. Uh, even that area behind the green tree, uh, is the green tree an HOA or, or? The, the, I refer, I've always referred to them as Green Tree Homes underneath that.
Yeah, I'm not aware that there's an active HOA there. Uh, they, they definitely, they don't have any common amenities that they maintain.
Okay.
Okay, so that's, that's something we can pursue further, um. I, I know that the development community can give us some examples with this type of overlay. That, uh, other cities have used and we can research that and, and have future discussions.
What do you think, Rob?
I think in concept, I like, uh, the overlay of the smaller lots, density bonus, some amenity trade-offs. And I think, you know, with just the basics we've seen, I'm in agreement that, that we would need to see a little bit more. Uh, especially a few of the specific ones that may be sensitive to certain areas. That, that we would, you know, look a little deeper into that and that may be during, that may be put into the specific or into the, um. The update here, the, uh, element. Um, that, that the commission and city would have, you know, ability to look deeper on, onto that to make sure that it's quality. I'm not sure if that's possible, but that's all, that's, that's all I have right now on this.
We could, we can include policies too that provide guidance. So that as you're implementing it through the zoning code, you have, um, those policies to. To really provide the support to ensure that quality development. Okay.
I think we can move on.
Okay, let's see, we, we've already talked about this one. And that's it, that's it for the opportunity area. So I just wanted. Um, to pause and see if there are any other questions or feedback before we let you know what the next steps are. I see no hands raised and no additional comments from the participants. Okay, great, thank you.
Um, this is, uh, Commissioner Kurt, I just, I, I think I might have missed early on when I had some, um, connectivity issues. But it's just a real general question, when we're talking, um, thirty, um, units per acre. Wha- what does that look like? That's obviously multi-story.
Um, yeah, an example I would think of is, is, uh, you know, areas adjacent to Victoria Gardens. Uh, Patricia, do you have any other examples that maybe, uh, the folks on the call today would, would know?
Thirty, thirty dwelling units per acre, you can. Again, depending on the size of the unit, but you can typically do that in three stories. Sometimes four stories, you know, like three stories over podium parking, but, um, we, we've seen lots of examples of. Of, um, accommodating thirty dwelling units per acre in, uh, three-story apartments.
And that's within our existing municipal code height restrictions on residential, multi-tenant residential zoning?
Yes.
Yeah, so as part of this process, um, since we were adjusting the densities of some of the, uh. Multifamily districts, we'll need to go through and kind of scrub the existing. Code standards and see which one, see which standards could stay and which ones would have to be modified. Um, but I do see some adjustments in height for, for, you know, the high density residential districts. But that's all gonna be something that will, will go along, our zoning code update's gonna go along. Uh, with this, uh, general plan update or follow immediately after. Uh, to implement the, the general plan. So our, our goal is to have a seamless transition, but there may be to- there may be certain topics. That we need to have additional discussion on to develop the actual zoning standards. Uh, for each of these land use districts.
And I don't know, Patricia, if we want to go back to the Dos Lagoes slide. That looks like it, it may be, um, thirty units break or something around that. And it, and it also shows how it looks across the street from a single-story commercial.
Break into here. These I think are four-story. This, this one, let's see, one, two, three. This one's three. And these are, looks like they're. Four-story, there may, it may even be overparking.
Uh, a- and that's also a good example of how it could be tiered, so it could be, uh, four stories farther. In on the parcel and then three stories where it transitions to commercial or, or single family.
Yeah, stepping back and that, those kinds of things can be included in the development standards as well, requiring those, that kind of. Buffering or, or tearing if it seems appropriate. Any other questions? Scott, should I, um, you know, we're, we're getting close to nine o'clock, you've, you've been wonderful, been so patient, really appreciate it. Um, should I, should we wrap up with the, the next steps?
Yeah, um, I think, yeah, quickly, quickly you can go through that and, uh, yeah, we appreciate everybody hanging in there.
Yes, very much so. So after this workshop, and this has been really, really helpful and we will be continuing to, um. Work on the land use element and, and turn these opportunity areas, um, and the, the things that we, we've talked about this evening into. Um, you know, actually incorporating them into the revised document. We do have another workshop, um, proposed. Little bit later on and that is to consider changes to the desert gateway specific plan. Um, and that's, it, I, I mentioned that we weren't really going to be touching specific plans except for the desert gateway. That is a really large area of the city, um, it has an existing specific plan on it that is very, very detailed. And it is not developing out that way according to the specific plan. So we're, we're wanting to look at that area that, um, I think Scott mentioned earlier, that's probably a really good location to be. Considering some of these light industrial slash, um. Light industrious slash heavy intensive commercial uses for things like, um, distribution facilities and, um. Especially with it being close to the, uh, uh, having direct access to the fifteen. So we'll be bringing, we'll be doing some brainstorming and bringing back some, um. Some ideas and some options for you to consider and, um, provide us some input on that. Um, some of the other steps, as, as I mentioned, so. Not only are we updating the housing element, but the safety elements and the new environmental justice element will have some policies. That will need to make sure that, um, are incorporated. We'll be preparing, ultimately preparing that land use element. And then I'm taking the draft land use element to the city council for input. And we want to get some direction from the city council before we begin the, um, environmental impact report for the draft land use element. Because it'll takes. The timing on it, I think maybe nine months or so to do the environmental impact report. So by the time we, and, oh, another thing that, that is being done is conduct, conducting a fiscal impact analysis. For the draft land use element so that the city can get a sense of, um, the, the, the financial impacts on the city, the, the. Um, positive and and trying to mitigate any negative impacts that. Might occur. So ultimately, we would be returning sometime in the summer of twenty twenty two for the public hearings. To review and adopt the land use element and to certify the environmental impact report. And as Scott mentioned, one of the things that can be occurring as a parallel effort to that would be. To starting to work on things like the implementation for the for the zoning code to craft the new um. Make tweaks to the existing zoning code where necessary, create a new high density residential um zone. Create the the mixed use zones and uh. Refine the low density residential infill overlay as well as the the health and wellness overlay. So that kind of in a nutshell is a a a high level overview of what's going to be happening um over the course of the next year. Scott, is there anything that you want to add to that?
No, that was a great summary of the next steps. Again, just thanks everybody for hanging in there on this long workshop. We appreciate everybody's feedback.
Yes, yes, thank you so much. This has been really, really beneficial, very helpful.
Okay, so uh now moving on to public comment, are 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 we okay with that, Scott, or is it time sensitive?
Um, yeah, you can uh, you can open up public comment, uh, see if anybody wants to speak.
Okay, so moving on to the public comment. In accordance with the Brown Act, we'll now take time for the public to provide comments on items not listed on the agenda. Is there any members of the public here today that would like to provide public comment? Please use the raise your hand function and Melissa will call on you.
Vice Chairman, I don't have anyone raising their hand and I don't have any messages coming through the chat.
All right then, and this meeting is adjourned.
Thank you, everybody. Thank you, Claudia, Patricia.
Thank you so much. Really appreciate it.
Thank you, everybody.
Okay.
Good night.